All right, I'm going to open the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 15th, at 6:01 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shanks, President.
Justice Sexton Duranian, President.
And Veronica Cal, President. And I would like to say that we have Ross Carey joining us via Zoom, or a bit, anyway. All right. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded on Zoom. It will be posted on the website, and it is also live on Channel 9. Chairman's additions or deletions. I just want to note that at 7:15, we will be going to Agenda Item 5.1.1, regardless of where we are in the agenda at the time. I wanted to give the Acting Fire Chief a time to be available for tonight, so that's the time we've had. So just know that. Does anybody else have any additions or deletions?
Nope.
Public comment period. Is there any public comments? All right, I don't see any, so I'm going to move on to minutes. We have two sets of minutes to review for tonight, 2:15, 2022, and 3:1, 2022. So, just one at a time. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve most of the minutes for 2:15, 2022.
And is there a second?
Second.
You have to do a roll call, Joe, because we're your remote, so... Just for... Just to note that. Any comments on them? Anything that needs change? Did I get the link in?
Yep.
No, good. I didn't see anything, Madam Chair.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Joe Shanks, yes.
Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right. So, moving on to the minutes of 3:1.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes for 3:1, 2022.
And is there a second?
Second.
Joe Shanks, second. All right, any comments on-
I got you. All right, sorry. Joe Shanks, second.
Thank you. Any comments on the minutes?
I didn't have any.
I did not, Madam Chair.
All right, then, we can vote. All those in favor?
Joe Shanks, yes.
Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes, thank you. So... Yes, they're in the working minutes. Thank you. I do, I saw that Harrison, this is just an aside, but it has to do with minutes. I saw that Harrison was on the FinCon meeting earlier. He's our webmaster. I'm not exactly sure if we have a start date for him yet, but I do have the sets of minutes that we've approved previously, all scanned and ready to roll. So that will be one of his first tasks, to get them up on the website, would be a good training thing for him. We have no appointments and hearings as such, so moving on to appointments of officials and personnel. We have been interviewing for the Community Services Coordinator. We interviewed two applicants, and we have an appointment tonight with contingencies. So, is there a motion?
I move that we appoint Emily McCaffrey as Community Services Coordinator, contingent on a reference check, a Corey check, and a pre-employment physical with a one-year probationary period.
Is there a second?
Joe Shanks, second.
All right, any, any comments?
I did receive an email from this appointment today, asking me if we received the references. I said, yes, we have, and we would be moving forward, and we'll let her know what, what the next steps are. So, I didn't-
Okay. All right, now that's fair. We'll get the references finished and checked this week.
Yeah, she submitted it and wanted to make sure we received them.
Okay, I did not, I think that was sort of for this to me by Ross.
I can contact her Monday, unless you want to contact her before then.
What I was gonna do, Ross, is I was gonna call the references. If you want to contact her, and just tell her that we appointed her tonight with contingencies, maybe send her an email even, if that's okay.
Yes, except I don't have her email address here, so...
Ah, okay.
I could do that, since she emailed me directly, she has-
Okay, are you good with that, Ross? If Chaz sends her an email? Okay.
Yes, that'd be fine.
And if I get the references done by tomorrow, I'll ask Katie to make a, put a packet together, and to contact her for the information that she'll need, so... Okay, all right, thank you. So, we need a vote. So, all those in favor of appointing Emily?
Joe Shanks, yes.
That's Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. So, thank you, Chaz and Ross, for being willing to do that.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on to 3.2, appoint Colby Streeter to the Conservation Commission for a term from today through 6:30, 2025. Colby was, isn't able to attend tonight. Mike just found that out. So, I guess the question is, do we want to go forward with the appointment based on the Conservation Commission's vote? Or do we want to wait until the next meeting? So what do you guys think? Joe, what do you mean?
I think we should just move forward. I mean, just because he can't make it tonight, I mean, as long as he's still interested, and it goes through the Conservation Commission, I mean, that's the way to do it, I think.
I review tonight. I'm okay with appointing tonight.
All right, so then, is there a motion?
I move to appoint Colby Streeter to the Conservation Commission for a term from today through 6:30, 2025.
And is there a second?
Joe Shanks, second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shanks, yes.
Ian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right. 3.3, I left this as an open item. I didn't put names on it, because Mike, Mike, our coordinator, is in process of appointing people to Open Space and Recreation Plan Committees. So, Mike, would you like to tell us who our appointments are?
Sure. Remember last meeting, a few folks were appointed, which was great. I think your video-
Yeah, it'll pop back.
But we have two more nominees right at the moment. The Store Commission's Board Representative is Mary Jane Churchville, who's a town resident, and the Board of Health's Board Representative, George Sullivan.
And could you get their volunteer response forms to us? Okay, so... Mary Jane Churchville as the Historic District Commission Representative, and this is for a term through June 2023.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we appoint Mary Jane Churchill from the Historic District Commission, and George Sullivan from the Board, a representative from the Board of Health, to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee from today through June of 2023.
Is, is there a second?
Joe Shanks, second.
I, I guess that... I, I don't have anything further, just to add the response forms, but that's it. So...
We should have two more people to be appointed at our next meeting, our next committee meeting on Friday, to appoint their nominee, and ConsCom is going to hold their nominee as well. Then we'll have one more seat. We'll be down to one last seat, but I have our position with the Open Space Committee.
Excellent.
We'd love to get someone who has background in agriculture from the area, because we're going to be visiting agriculture in our Open Space Plan. It'd be great to have some sort of representative from that. The Agricultural Commission is not currently seated in Congress, so there isn't necessarily a nominee from them. But we give them one more open position if anyone's interested and wants to get involved, and set up a plan to attend.
All right, great. All right, so how, we need a vote on this. So, Joe Shanks, how do you vote?
Yes, Joe Shanks votes, yes.
Justice Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yeah. All right, great. So we can get started as soon as we get the... So I'm leaving this open for the April 5th. That's our next, so it's three weeks. So hopefully, we'll have people in that time.
Yep, and we're just beginning to kick off in April 11th.
April 11th, oh, excellent. All right, thank you very much, Mike. All right, the next one is 4.1, and this is the vote to award the bid for the Shared Streets and Spaces Director.
I did not get that packet, ma'am.
It should be in your email. All right. We had one and only one bidder for the Shared Streets and Spaces bike lanes and, and crosswalks. Yes. And I very quickly looked at the amount. I have it, I left that at home. I left a packet at home of things. I didn't need to print this out, because I already had it. One minute.
Is the price on the-
Can you see it? Title this?
Yeah.
All right, so, we bid this out as four items. So for the Depot Street Contraflow Bike Lane, it's 9,000. For the Bow Street Contraflow Bike Lane, it's 5,500. For the Highland Street Extension Contraflow Bike Lane, it's 10,500. And for Restriping of Crosswalks, it's 14,500. We had bid it out, we had said it was seven crosswalks, but they looked at it as nine, because like the one across from the, from the Catholic Church at Highland Street, there's like two sections to it. So they counted it as one, and then another. And that amount was 14,500, so this comes out to 38,500 for the bid, if I'm adding correctly. It's in here somewhere as a total. But anyway, so what we need to do is award the bid to, this is K5 Corporation. So is there a motion?
I move that we accept the bid from the K5 Corporation for the Shared Streets and Spaces Bike Lane and Crosswalk Stripping Project.
Joe Shanks, second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion?
I believe the total that they bid is less than, than the grant amount, so I think the funds are covered.
Yes. That, that is the case. So it's, I, doing the math, and again, I left that packet at home. We will have, we have everything bid out, and... Oh, wait, what is this? Total bid for all items was $54,309. Okay, I don't know what I was adding then. Oh, I see, those were estimates. The bid for all eight crosswalks, 29,600, that's where I was off. All right, so, in any event, the total bid is $54,309. And yes, I did the math on this, and we wind up, overall, the grant was 182,000. And I, I think we are under by about 20,000 to 25,000, depending on how much labor we use in putting up the signs. So, that's where we are.
For the total project.
For the total project, yes. With this bid, everything has been purchased, received, and bid out. So it needs to be completed by the end of June. So, we'll be seeing a lot of signs going up as soon as the frost is out of the ground. All right, so do we have a, a vote to award the bid?
Joe Shanks, yes.
Yes.
Justice Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right. Moving on to 4.2. Is there a motion to award a one-day liquor license for the Townsend Congregational Church fundraiser on May 7?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a one-day liquor license for the Townsend Congregational Church fundraiser on May 7th, 2022.
And do we need to put a time? It's from 5:00 to 10:00 PM?
Yeah, it's, it's an auction fundraiser for the church. There's going to be anywhere, they're estimating 50 to 75 people. And this is for wine and malt only. And hours of the event, 5:00 to 10:00 PM.
Okay, so is there a second?
Joe Shanks, second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shanks, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. The next thing was, is 4.3. This is the bond for the treasure collector that needs to be signed. And I, there is a, an original of this with who needs to, you know, where it needs to be signed on the bookshelf in there, so I am going to ask for a motion that we move to have the town administrator sign the bond.
I move that we instruct the interim town administrator to sign the bond for the treasure collector.
Joe Shanks, second that.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shanks, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, 4.4, this is the Waste Zero Agreement for the Board of Health. And... For the overflow bags, I believe?
Yes.
For Ush pickup? And I'm looking to see the signature on this.
It's you, me, Joe.
Yes, all three of us, all right. So is there a motion to sign the Waste Zero Agreement for the Board of Health?
I'll move with a discussion. I move that we sign the Waste Zero Agreement for the Board of Health.
Joe Shanks, second that. Joe Shanks, second.
All right, so discussion.
On, I did see Carla that was on here. Exhibit B has a retailer list, but there's no names on it. Do we use retailers for this?
I thought that you could buy them at McNabs, but I don't know what you mean by retailers. Is that where we go to purchase?
I think it's where they're, it's a store address, so it's, it's the outlets that do it besides Town Hall.
Right.
I feel that we need to have that, that information in here, along with all of our signatures.
All right.
I don't like signing something with a blank space in it.
So can we say we will sign a contingent upon Exhibit B being completed?
Okay, I will move to amend my motion.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yeah?
I won't be back until the 26th. Is that going to screw this up for my signature?
We really need that stamp, don't we?
Ross said that, didn't he?
What we could do, I mean, I, we can do it with two out of three. I think it's still, you know, it's still an approval, if it's just, you know, two out of three of us. So if that's okay with, you know, if you're okay with us going forward that way, Joe.
Yes, I'm fine. Don't tie it up.
If it hasn't been signed, if we don't have Exhibit B completed by then, then you will be more than welcome to sign it when you get back.
All right, I'll come in Town Hall anyway that day.
It'll be there, you know, on the shelf.
No problem.
McNabs, I think.
I knew that McNabs did it. I wasn't sure.
So I just wanted to make sure that we get their names in there.
Hey, I gotta mute for one second. I'll be right back.
Okay, anything else to discuss?
No.
All right.
We're gonna wait till he gets back.
All right, so we'll just take a break for a second.
All right, sorry about that.
All right, so we're gonna vote on the signing the Waste Zero Agreement for the overflow bags for trash, contingent on Exhibit B being completed, so...
Joe Shanks, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. 4.5 is the policy for town vehicle use. The decommissioned water department vehicle by the use of that vehicle by town department employees, such as conservation, land use, facilities, planning, building, et cetera, et cetera. Right now, we pay money when the employees use their own vehicles. So this would be a vehicle that they could use, and if you give me one second, Ross had something on this in his report, and Ross, if you're on and want to talk a little bit about that, or do you want us to just go ahead and talk? It's up to you. Ross there? I'm looking for his- I'm sorry, say that, Joe?
Connected my headphone.
Okay. All right, thank you. What Ross had written here is, under miscellaneous in his report, the Water Department is no longer using the Ford Fusion Hybrid, which he believes was purchased with the Green Communities grant. It's currently at the Town Hall parking lot. The board may want to consider allowing Town Hall employees to use it for town business, instead of paying the mileage to use their own vehicles. So we'll need a list of names to add to the insurance policy. We will also set up a scheduling system and a central location for the key. Ross suggests we remove the old semi-functional ambulance that Tima hopes to use and store, hopes to use, and stored in the yard behind the DPW, then store the Town Hall vehicle in the garage. So... It's in a simple education. So anyway, what I did and put in the packet was, I pulled out the vehicle assignment policy that is in, that is a current policy for the town of Townsend. And then I pulled out some from other towns, just so that we would have something to look at, because I, I do think that we need to make some updates to this policy. So all I wanted to do tonight was just sort of review some of the things that are in there, and ways that we can make this happen, because we have a good vehicle to use, and we might as well use it as a town vehicle. So, thoughts on it?
Well, I had, I had conversations with the Water Department in, well, I attended all of the water meetings, and their new vehicle is working out really well for them. My thoughts were that this vehicle would be a perfect vehicle for some of the, as they affectionately call in the Conservation Department, road trips. But they go out to survey, they go out to, there's several projects that are currently underway now that they do need to, to review and update. These are short trips, and this is some, this is a hybrid vehicle, so I think it's, it's a, it helps with our green footprint. But I also feel that there are short trips that a lot of the employees do make here, and having one central vehicle would be the most logical, to really cut down on some of the mileage that's being put in. I think that the mileage, at least the numbers are pretty, you know, it's pretty substantial. So if we can kind of cut that down and save on some energy, I think that's a wise thing for us to be able to do.
I think it could be used also for the Board of Health, for trips between Town Hall and the dump.
Yep.
And back, the assessors, if they're going out, Building Department for inspections. Facilities, if you're not carrying things, you know, wood or whatever, you know, if you're just going to a different facility to check on things, you could take that vehicle.
Yep, I agree.
So, anyway, so looking at the policy, what I saw is, this is really for 24-hour vehicles, people that take vehicles home. And so, what I, what I did is look through this and thought, what Ross says is exactly right. There just needs to be some sort of sign out, which we could add to this. I, I know when I used a vehicle at college, for example, we had a clipboard. So when we got the keys, we got the clipboard, and we had to, you know, sign in the mileage that was on the vehicle, the mileage when we returned the vehicle, you know, that sort of thing, time. I think that we need to add in here things like copies of licenses, making sure that anybody that's going to be using it is on the insurance policy. I think Ross addressed that somewhat.
Yeah, he had said that. I know that when I, when I did my work with Job Corps, they had federal vehicles that were there, and it was actually a three-ring notebook, and in there it had the registration, it had the insurance policy, it had all the information in the booklet, along with the keys, and sign-out sheets. You had to write on your mileage, what you took out, and what you, and it had policies on what happens with everything, so that if you had any questions, you can go right into that notebook, if there was an accident, blah, blah, that kind of stuff. As far as the licenses, those were done by whoever was authorized to use the vehicle. There was a list that was in there with just who was authorized to use it. The person who was the holder of the book had to check that. The copies of the license went to the insurance company, and then they signed them up. The person who was the holder of the book had to check that. On the copies of the license went to the insurance company and then they signed them up for it.
Okay. Um, and the other thing that I saw in here, I think it was one of these, Nantucket, I see accident report. They had an accident report in here that might be, that was kind of complete. So.
Right, the, what to fill out in the event of and that kind of stuff. But that would be in that three-ring.
I'm writing down three-ring notebook. Go ahead, Joe.
I think somewhere around there, Madam Chair, we have to at least have some sort of each person. Position. I just.
You're breaking up, Joe. Say, repeat again. I'm hearing every other word.
I said we need to also include a base signing of condition of the vehicle. So it takes, as the vendor vendor doesn't report it and the poor next person gets caught with it. I think that would be important.
Okay, all things that we could put in a three-ring notebook. So in the minutes, I'm gonna put a list, the three-ring notebook and the things that we could put in there. Okay. And then we'll go from there. Our internet connection is unstable.
It'll do that every now and then.
All right, so this will go on the next agenda with a little bit further in there.
So I'll work on, I'll work on that notebook when we get back.
Okay, thanks, Ross. We'll put that together. Cindy, I see your hands up, but I'm not gonna take comments.
No, it's a question. It's awful. I'm not, it's.
Okay, go ahead.
There's two. One, did you talk to TMA about putting the vehicle behind my head?
That, that we'll let Ross handle. Go ahead.
I was just thinking that the Old England, it might have some, TMA might use it for fluids or something that needs to be stayed in.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Second question.
The other one was just, um, I, I know that most employees that are using mileage.
Madam. Point of order.
That there's a.
There's a point of order.
Cindy, Joe, go ahead.
Madam Chair. Area was earlier. This is not, not here to take public comment on our decisions.
All right, so I think Cindy was just pointing out that, um, uh, mileage and we did think about that, so.
Well, the other thing was some of the employees, like some of the contracted, I know the old building inspector had, I think he had, he may have had a stipend in his.
Yeah, we're not gonna discuss that right now.
This is.
We are aware of all of that, so. Okay, moving on. So Ross will work on the notebook and I'll put in the minutes, whatever I remember from today, but we have it on tape, so that's a good thing. Uh, the TA Search Committee recommendations is the next thing on the list.
I first want to thank the, um, the TA Search Committee. I really enjoyed, I think they did too, um, the process that we followed. This was, even though the state, we had not had a final approval and what we had voted on, we did follow what the new charter was for the Town Administrator Search to a T. I do want to thank, um, first, I want to thank Lori Schiffern for all of her, um, her work that she helped us out with. Her expertise and, and a lot of her questions had to deal with housing and other important, um, issues as this 40 years in town. Um, I want to thank Dave Chanel for his committee. Uh, he is a former selectman and has an attorney. He did a great job in, in helping me vet a lot of the original applicants that came in. Uh, Dave Fignoli was instrumental in, in asking a lot about, uh, some good questions and with his expertise. Don Hayes, I want to thank Hayes as well. He was our Finance Committee representative, but this was, it's nice to see, uh, some stepping up and helping us out with a lot of the functions here at, at Town Hall. Did I forget anybody? I hope I didn't. I don't think I did. Um, we had 18. Yeah, we had 18 of the applicants. We did discuss what qualifications were, um, were required for the position. That allowed us to eliminate several candidates because they didn't fulfill the education requirement or the years' experience requirement. That brought it down to, to meetings where we had asked that there were six candidates that we wanted to bring into interview and have a conversation with. With that, some of those six were, we did have several withdrawals. Of the withdrawals, we had, um, to make that panel of six, there were two women that were on there. Uh, one had accepted a position in Ashby as the Town Administrator. Uh, the other one was in negotiation for another position in another town. Uh, we also had two other gentlemen that had withdrew because they did find previous employment in other areas. So on behalf of the Town Administrator Search Committee, um, I'm presenting you with the three finalists that we came up with. And Joe, I have your folder here. In no particular order, um, we do have Ryan McLean, MPA. Uh, we have James M. Omira Jr. And we have R. Eric Sligo. Um, and all of these candidates were notified that, um, the names were being submitted today, that we were gonna be announcing their names and we hand over to the selectmen to then take it from here for their interview process.
All right, so. Thank you. Guys did a great job. We have three. Joe, go ahead.
Buddy, thank you for your hard work.
So when I'd like.
I'm frozen online. Okay.
What I wanted to do was see if we could set up times for interviews. Did you discuss with them at all how the interview process would go with the selectmen?
Um, I said that they would be contacted by someone from the selectmen's office with their next steps. So yes and no.
All right, so what we need to do right now is come up with those next steps. My first?
I'm frozen too.
Can you hear us, Joe?
I can hear you. Yes. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so, um, as far as, um, as far as next steps, when do we want to do interviews? I would like to do interviews in person if we could. So I guess the questions are, when do we do interviews? When and where? Do we set up a set of questions just like we did when we did the interim Town Administrator Search? And do we want the interviews to be in person or are we good with soon? Those would be, I guess, what I would want to know. Anything else that we should?
I did say that the next, the next interview would be in person here at Town Hall.
Okay.
Think we should do.
I think we should do in person too. So that means we're looking at after the 26th of March, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so then I guess what I would want to know is, um, so after the 26th. The 31st, first or second, second being a Saturday, the 31st is a Thursday. Or we could do the 30, 30, 31, one or two.
I can.
How, how are those dates? Do you guys have calendars?
I do, Madam Chair. I'm good.
Any of those, Joe? I heard you're good, but. I don't know if I'm frozen or what's going on here.
Yes, they were.
Yes. Any, any, the 30th, 31st, first or second, I'm good with.
Maybe we should stay away from Friday, the first, April Fool's Day. My preference would be April 2nd. Cause it's a Saturday, but maybe not everybody prefers that.
I'm good.
You're good? What do you think, Chair?
It would have to be if it's.
You're all frozen.
Uh, Chaz and Veronica, we can't hear you.
Yeah, you guys, I cannot hear you. Hello? Can anybody hear Veronica or Chaz?
I cannot. I can, I can hear Joe.
There is hearing Joe, um, and then whoever was last in. This is Don Hayes.
Yeah, Veronica and Chaz, you guys are absolutely, we cannot hear you. Hotley, can you go and find out what's going on?
I just did and they said there's apparently an internet problem.
Okay. Can any of them, Hotley, just jump onto their laptop and not use the owl?
Go, Joe. Now we can hear you.
Now we can hear you.
Okay.
We're not, the owl has apparently shut itself down.
Right.
So, as far as, um, sound goes.
Okay.
Do you have a day that you prefer, Wednesday evening, Thursday evening, or Saturday?
I'm, I'm good with any day you pick. That's convenient for you too.
What's good for you? All right, then we're gonna go with Saturday as our first choice.
Perfect.
Okay, and I'll make Thursday the second choice. And Wednesday, the third choice. All right. All right, and they will be in person at Town Hall. And, um, set of questions. What I will do is I'll send out the interim questions. I think we probably have a different set. Or, you know, we can start there and if you would each edit and, um, we'll have to.
We have those in SharePoint. I think we have.
We have them in SharePoint. So maybe we can look at that and, and do our questions. We don't have a meeting between now and the, and the opening, you know, the interview day. Unless we want to have them. I don't think we do either.
We could do.
No.
Bring our questions in like we did before. Um, and then make a decision on what we're gonna, or how we're gonna ask. You know how it kind of fell into place as to who was asking for what?
Right, okay. All right, so, um, look at the questions for the interim TA and add or subtract as you've, you know, uh, you know, decide which ones you want to ask. The questions are fairly the same, but I have to look at them again because there may be more questions because this is a permanent position. All right, so we have a plan going forward. Is there anything else we should be talking about with this?
No.
I want to mute now that I'm coming online.
Okay, I'm gonna mute.
Hang on, Joe.
All right. I can see you now, Chaz. I cannot hear you though.
Uh, Chaz and Veronica, we can see you, but we can't hear you.
Now you can hear us.
Yeah, now I can hear you. Yeah.
Thank you, Hartley.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you very much to the TA Search Committee. We appreciate it. As far as the future of the TA Search Committee goes, I'd like you guys not to disband until after we have an offer in place.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you, Joe?
Yes, yeah, don't, yeah.
We have to go back out. I'm, I'm hoping we don't, but.
Okay, well, we have to meet anyway at some point to, um, to approve minutes and then, uh, I need to do a report for what we did tonight. And then, um, we'll just, I guess we'll just wait until we get a, uh, offer in and then acceptance and then we can dissolve.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, I'm moving on to 4.7. Discuss the possibility with information session for the annual town meeting warrant on Thursday, April 21st or Wednesday, April 20th. So again, looking at the calendars. I would like to move the Board of Selectmen meeting from Tuesday, the 19th to Wednesday, the 20th. And try to hold the agenda to, um, an hour to an hour and a half. Okay, don't look at me at that, but. It will be a challenge. Um, and, uh, so instead of having a meeting on the 19th, we would just have a meeting at maybe 5:30. Can you make that, Chaz?
Yep, I could do that on a Wednesday, sure.
On Wednesday, the 20th at 5:30 and then have an all-town meeting at 7:00 in the Great Hall. So we'd have our meeting in here at 5:30, 5:30 to 7:00. And then at 7:00 PM, go to the Great Hall and do an all-town meeting to go over the warrant for town meeting. This was Ross's suggestion and I think it's a good one. He checked with John and John is available either the night of the 20th or the night of the 21st. That's the alternative night.
So do you want to do, uh, a Zoom as well with that?
Yeah, we would do a Zoom.
The same thing that we did before.
Do Channel 9. And it would be just to go over everything on the warrant prior to the town election. Um, especially if we're gonna have a prop two and a half question on that. We haven't talked about that yet, but it's a possibility. And, and so it might make town meeting go more smoothly. This was Ross's suggestion. So what do you guys think? And is Wednesday, the 20th, good? Or would you rather do it the 21st?
I'm good with the 20th.
Yeah, I agree.
The 20th, Ross, are you on?
Yes, I'm on and that's fine.
Is that good? Okay, so, um, let's plan for the Board of Selectmen meeting at 5:30 on 4/20. And then the all-town meeting at 7 o'clock. Like, should we say 7 to 8:30 or do we want to put an end time on it? What do you think, Ross?
Yes, an end time would be good. Um, and we can work on the format for it. I think it's a chance for people to ask questions and hopefully us to provide answers.
Okay. Do we want to pick an end time now or do we want to wait?
I think we should pick like 8:30.
Okay. 7 to 8:30.
Um, and I would just, if you guys want me to work with TCAM to get set up like we did before, I don't have a problem helping out with that.
Okay, did everybody hear that? Chaz has volunteered to work with TCAM to get us set up in the Great Hall.
Okay, good job.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
All right. Ross, anything else or are we good? You'll notify John?
Yes, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So Ross will notify John of our date so he can get that, you know, in his calendar too. All right. Next item. Discuss slash vote on the acceptance of the petition to make harbor trace and cooperate way town roads. And if the petition is accepted, to notify the planning board. So, a couple of things on that. I'm looking for my phone, which I thought I heard. Just get me, give me one second to get the paperwork out on this. And to check if my. Can we take a short break? Would that be all right, to take a five-minute break?
I'm okay with that.
Joe, are you okay with that?
Sure. Thank you.
Let's take a five-minute break. It is 6:53. We'll be back at 6:58. Um, all right, I would like to, it is 6:59 and we're coming back from our break. We are at item, um, 4.8 on the agenda. This is, um, discuss and vote on the acceptance of a petition to make harbor trace and cooperate way town roads. And if the petition is accepted, to notify the planning board of such per chapter 17521b2. Chapter 17521b discusses how a town road is accepted. So we did receive in the office, an application. And I believe Adam is gonna be getting on in a minute. So I'm gonna wait to say anything further until he is on. Adam Costa is our town council. I don't see him yet. Do you see him?
No.
So I guess what I'm gonna do while we're waiting for Adam is, um, I'm just gonna read from chapter 17521, which is in your packets. And could be in mine too, if I can find them. I might have to borrow yours. I've been pulling this stuff in and out and. Uh, yeah. Oh yeah, I have it like this. All right, so what this is, is the layout and acceptance of ways. The acceptance of a way as a town way is a separate process only indirectly related to subdivision approval. B, the process for submitting a street for acceptance is as follows. One, submit a petition to the selectmen to put the question on the next town meeting warrant according to their rules and procedures. This submission must, at a minimum, contain six complete sets of plans of the road, separate and distinct from the as-built plans described above, above being, previously in the chapter 175. The planning board's fee for this application is $250 to cover the costs associated with the public hearing and report. This amount is over and above any fee charged by the selectmen. Two says the board will, the board, that's the Board of Selectmen, will schedule a public hearing. No, I'm sorry, the board is the planning board, will schedule a public hearing after being notified of the acceptance of your petition by the selectmen. And that's where we are today. That's why we are here. And, um, so the, the question becomes the acceptance of the, of the, of the submission. And let me just text this. Adam's gonna get on.
Yep, he's here.
Oh, is he here?
He's here.
All right.
Connecting.
Um, so Adam, I have, is he connected?
Yep, he's on.
He's on. Okay, so Adam, I have just, um, read 17521 through B. And, uh, B2, the board will schedule a public hearing after being notified of the acceptance of your petition by the selectmen. So what we were planning to do today was vote on whether or not to accept the petition as it came in and to pass it on to the planning board. So would you like to just talk in general about the road acceptance bylaw in Townsend?
Uh, sure, so, uh, happy to do that. Nice to, nice to see you all again. So let me, let me provide just a, a general overview for the board's benefit and the benefit of any members of the public that, that might, uh, be, be curious. So you have a, you have a, a road acceptance, uh, street acceptance provision in your bylaw. But the reality is that much of the, the public way layout and acceptance process in Massachusetts is governed by statute. And the bylaw simply incorporates in a simplified form what state statute requires in terms of process. So it's a, it's a multi-step process to lay out a public way in Massachusetts. As I said, it's dictated by chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Law. So, um, the, the reason that many communities have adopted bylaws, as you have in Townsend, and the reason that communities have also adopted, uh, in some instances, local policies or procedures for laying out and accepting public ways, as you have also done in Townsend, um, is to provide you with adequate advance notice of the intention of a developer, property owner, or group of property owners to seek the acceptance of a way and to give you an opportunity to fulfill your statutory requirements sufficiently far in advance of town meeting. That town meeting can take action on the, on the petition. So the way that it typically works in most municipalities, and it would be no different in Townsend, is that the layout process starts with the submittal to the Board of Selectmen of a petition, not to be confused with the citizens petition. We can talk about that if we need to a bit later, but a petition to lay out a roadway as public. It can be, uh, and often is a roadway that has been already laid out as a private way, often through the subdivision process. And the proposal is for the way to be laid out as public and then eventually accepted by the town as public. And so often what accompanies that, and many municipalities require this through their bylaw or through their, through their policy, uh, a layout plan and the description of the roadway that is proposed to be accepted by the town as public. That plan doesn't necessarily need to be a full and entirely new survey plan or an as-built plan. It can be something that was already approved, like a subdivision plan. As long as it shows the location of the way, the dimensions of the way, then it's satisfactory, uh, in serving the purpose of depicting the way and, and allowing, uh, the, the Board of Selectmen to decide whether it wants to accept the petition and forward that petition on, uh, to the planning board, which will be, which will be the next step in the process. So step one in the process is petition gets submitted to the, to the Board of Selectmen. Also, part of that first step is for the Board of Selectmen to determine whether that layout process should proceed, whether the submittal of information required is complete, whether they have some form of a plan, again, that shows the dimensions and location of the proposed public way. And if it has all that information, the board can then vote to refer the matter to the planning board, which is step two. And step two isn't, isn't voluntary. It's a requirement of state statute that the planning board has a period of 45 days after a referral. The referral itself is mandatory. Then there's a period of 45 days after referral for the planning board to review the submittal and to issue a report. That's a, a non-binding report. The planning board doesn't have any binding authority with respect to the acceptance of public ways. But it issues a report on the appropriateness of accepting the layout and ultimately accepting the way. It can address, uh, the status of the way with respect to subdivision standards, whether the roadway is of adequate width, whether the roadway has appropriate slopes, whether it has concerns as to the manner or method of construction of the roadway and whether the roadway will, uh, suffice in terms of it being accepted and maintained in the future as a public way. All of that, all those things are the sorts of things that the Board of, uh, the Planning Board can consider in making its report, um, back to, uh, back to the Board of Selectmen. So that's step two in the process. Step three in the process, and I mentioned before, this is a lengthy process, hence the, the, the need for a period of time prior to, or preceding town meeting. Step three in the process is, once the planning board, during that 45-day period, it can be less, but it can be up to 45 days, once it has issued its non-binding report, the next step is for the selectmen, step three, for the selectmen to then vote at a public meeting to actually affect the layout, to lay out the way as a public way. And again, governed by statute, there's a required notice that must issue in advance of the actual layout meeting, seven days in advance to all landowners that would be affected by, by the, the roadway acceptance. That layout meeting is conducted, after the layout meeting is conducted, presuming that it, it is satisfactory, then the, the, the fourth step in the process and the final step in the process is, uh, the, the town meeting vote. And the matter then gets placed onto a warrant and town meeting can vote to accept or not the way as a public way. And that's a, it's, requires a simple majority vote unless there's a provision of local charter that is to the contrary, and there's not in Townsend. And, uh, and that would, that would, uh, that would complete the process and, uh, ultimately convert the way from what is now typically a, a, a private way into a public way. So that's the statutory process. Again, it's no different in Townsend. You have a bylaw that, that hit some of those highlights. But you're, you're at the first step in that multi-step process. The petition has been made to your board and the decision now for your board is to determine whether you have the information necessary for you to refer it to the planning board, for the planning board to issue its non-binding report.
So, um, I, I have a couple of questions, but do either of you have questions first?
Joe, let's get questions.
Joe?
I'm mute, Joe.
All right, I got yelled at for breathing, so I figured I'd better mute.
All right, Joe, go ahead.
Well, I, I've got some, I, I've got a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. So Adam, I just, first I want to just get clarification here. So this subdivision was at about the approximate same time that a subdivision that I went through the process in the town of Townsend. And that is Madison Ave. And before I could continue, the planning board had a set of rules that in order to take and have Madison Ave be accepted as a town road, it had provisions that we had to have as-built plans done at the end of it, but we also had to have the town witness the compaction ratings every so many feet of the road. We had to have the town witness the paving of the road. We had to have, uh, all of our stormwater management all certified and documented. And so I, I guess my question here is, 20-something years later, that's been a road that's never been accepted. I, I, I did go, I was notified. I went to Town Hall. I was notified by the Land Use Court. I, I, I did go, I was notified, I went to town hall, was notified by the land use coordinator, Mr. Crowley to come in and give my opinion, and I looked in the file. In that file, there is no as-built, there's no bounds, there's no nothing. So I just asked him, well, why don't you just go to the Madison Ave road layout that was accepted within the two years' time that they started? And in the record, because that's what had to be done, documented per the planning board, per the, per the rules that you had to have all the bounds, had to have everything done, and then as-built, that is in that file of that road. So I'm just a little concerned that 20 something years later, they're trying to come in and cram this road down our throat, and I don't, I, I cannot see that happen. I, I, I just, I, I think there's a set of policies that were put in effect and I, I, I don't know. Why are we even addressing this? It's not a complete package.
So I guess, um, well, your question is for Adam, but I think that's what we're here for today is to decide whether or not this is a complete package and whether or not we, um, submit it onto the planning board. So Chaz, do you have any questions?
I have a, well, I have a couple of questions too. A- as far as Adam, the, the, the timing of this, um, my understanding after doing, you know, looking over what, what's been submitted, we have, um, we have the, we, the selectmen have the, the ability to look at this, see if the application itself is complete and then turning it over to the planning board. The, when we turn it over to the planning board, you said that there's, they have 45 days to hold a, um, public hearing on it? Is that the, the process?
Correct.
So, all right, so it would be the selectmen need to decide whether or not this is complete, and then the planning board within 45 days to hold a public hearing, do the review, talk to the abutters, all of that kind of stuff. And then once that process is finished, then it goes to the warrant? If it, if it passes.
So just, just a couple of clarifications. So the planning board doesn't necessarily have to conduct a public hearing. Let me, let me pull your bylaw. I have it open here to see if there's anything in the bylaw that requires, uh, the bylaw indicates that.
It, it says the board will schedule.
So your, your, your bylaw adds a public hearing requirement. There's no such requirement in state law than be a public hearing. It's only required to be a meeting within that 45 days, but your bylaw, it's actually not your bylaw. It's your planning board subdivision rules and regulations. So I guess that's another stor- story as to whether it's what, what force and effect it has, but nevertheless, it's in the regulations that the board will, will schedule the public hearing. So the public hearing would be conducted within 45 days. At the conclusion of that period, it doesn't go directly to the town meeting. It comes back to the selectmen for the selectmen to then conduct the layout meeting. And, um, and that's, that's the process that I referred to requires advance notice pursuant to chapter 82, section 22, seven days in advance. Um, and then the, the, the select, the board of selectmen votes to lay out the roadway, which will then get submitted to town.
Correct. So, um, then it, the, herein lies my, my question. Um, I believe that this is premature to put on the warrant at this particular point because of all the work that we have to do going forward. Is that not correct?
So I'm, um, it, it may be. Um, you know, I, I don't want to make that judgment call. It's not one for me, it's one for you as a board as to whether you think it's premature based upon timing and what you think the planning board could or couldn't accomplish, or how comfortable you are being in a, uh, placed in a position where you might have to conduct the layout hearing after, you know, the 45 days or in or less time in close proximity to the town meeting. You've got, in, in the first, the first I ever saw of it was about a week and a half ago when, when, uh, when Mike Crowley sent it to me. You have this document entitled Owners Responsibilities for Town's Acceptance of Private Roads as Public Way. It's a town document. I'm not sure of the origin of that document. I'm not sure that Mike is certain of the origin of the document, but he presented it to me in connection with a discussion that he and I had about the process. I talked with Veronica about the process as well. And this document I'm referring to, it's a three-page document. It, it, it's a document that exists in many municipalities. I referred before to the fact that many municipalities have policies, and it's meant to sort of get down into the, the nitty-gritty of what's required to be submitted to the town for the town to be put placed in a position where it has the information it needs to conduct this four-step process that I described. And so it talks about what constitutes a complete petition package, and it has a list of seven items or so. So, and, and, and my understanding too is that there is generally a deadline by which these documents need to be submitted far enough in advance of the town meeting so that the town has an opportunity to fulfill that multi-step process. You know, here we are, it's March 15th, where, you know, a, a couple of months, less than a couple of months away from town meeting. So, uh, the, the timing, there's no question that time is short with respect to completing that process that I, I just described. Whether you can do it, whether you want to do it, whether you want to push yourselves to do it, whether you feel you have all the information that you needed to stage in the process to pass it along to the planning board, that's a matter left to your discretion.
Well, I, I got a question for you, Adam. Just, uh, start right off. I mean, the proposal that they gave us, the petition to accept Harbor Trace Road and corporate corporate road way, and it's not even, that isn't the, the road. It, it's not even the right road. It's Coop Ridge Way and not corporate way. So, I mean, and that in itself is kind of a, a, a problem. It, the petition isn't even correct. The road spelling and wording isn't even correct. And I have a real concern that, you know, th- they have the signatures and there's not one person on this petition that is from any of those two roads. So if you wanted to accept or have those people or have a petition, why would we have signatures that not one single signator is on either one of those two roads that they want us to accept? That, that's just ludicrous.
So, um, part of the challenge here, I mean, that this is really, you know, and I, I hate to describe it like this because I, I don't, I'm not poking fun at, at, at the applicant or, uh, but it's sort of a comedy of errors here in terms of what I, what I see in the application package that was submitted and what I've discussed with the chair of the board. There, there's a, you know, what, what could certainly be considered to be an incomplete package according to what the chair has told me. You don't even have a, a, an official layout plan. Maybe there, there may be plans that show the roadway, dimensions of the roadway and whatnot, location, but you don't have a true roadway acceptance plan in your possession yet. There's also a petition, the one that you, Mr. Shank, just referenced. There's a, there's a petition here that was submitted as a citizen's petition. Now, I've been using the term petition for the past 10 or 15 minutes here as I've been describing the process. That's because the process, as it's been described by statute, as it's been described in secondary documents like this, this policy that exists in Townsend, as it, as it is described by, by, by many secondary sources in the law, this petition for roadway acceptance isn't one and the same with a citizen's petition. When I'm referring to a petition for roadway acceptance, what I really is a request, a document that functions as a request to the selectmen to advance a proposal to accept a way as public. In this instance, what the applicant did is the applicant submitted a whole series of paperwork to your board with its request for roadway acceptance, but also submitted to you a citizen's petition. Now, a citizen's petition isn't limited to the context of roadway acceptance. Citizen's petitions are used, as you know, with great frequency to place items on town meeting and special town meeting warrants. And there are rules governing citizen's petitions. For a spec, for, for an annual town meeting, you require the signatures of certified signatures of 10 registered voters. For a special, you require 100 signatures. The citizen's petition has to be placed on the warrant in the form in which it's been presented, provided to the board. It can't be altered, generally speaking, by the board before it's placed in the warrant. So it's been presented in that form, which kind of boxes you in a bit because that's not typically how roadway acceptances are advanced. Typically, they're advanced by a, a, a plain old regular petition to the selectmen for roadway acceptance, and then the selectmen of their own volition in their own powers advance the petition first to the, to the planning board, then they, then they conduct a formal layout meeting, and then they advance it to town meeting and place it on the warrant themselves. So this being done in the form of a citizen's petition, and this is why I refer to it as sort of a comedy of errors. It, it complicates matters because as to your point, Mr. Shank, you're now bound to place the citizen's petition on the warrant in the manner in which it's been submitted, and it doesn't even refer to the proper roadways. So what is it that's going to be accepted by town meeting? A roadway that doesn't exist, a roadway by a name that, that doesn't exist. So it's, it, it adds just an additional layer of complication here to the, the process is alre- already a bit hurried.
What I they, they have this application here. They've paid the fee. What I would like to do is, um, and, and Adam, you can tell me if this is okay. Um, Matt, uh, to move to reconsider the petition when the application, when the petition to accept the private roads is complete. Because right now there are errors in the name of at least one of the roads they would like to have us complete. I, I did speak to, um, the attorney for the applicant yesterday, um, about, uh, to ask if there was a road plan they could submit, and he was going to check with the engineer. But we don't have a, a road plan that would allow us to determine whether or not, or would allow the planning board to determine whether or not. So, um, so I, I'm not opposed to accepting the petition, but I am opposed to accepting it if it's incomplete. So I, I would say that if I don't know, if they want to start the process, do they have to withdraw this and then come back to us? Or can we hold on to this and then once it's complete, vote to accept the petition and move it on to the planning board? And then get it on whatever the next town meeting is? Because I, I can see where the planning board might want to have an engineer look at the plan.
They would, they would, um, being, both being planning board members at one point, I know that we would probably want to have a peer review or something like that.
Right. So, um, I, I guess the question is, do we have that option of saying we will just set this on to the side, off to the side, when it is complete, we will again put this on the agenda to accept it? And, and then move it on to the planning board? But to get it in for this town meeting, I, I don't know that that's a possibility.
So, Madam Chair, it's an option. I, I just don't know that I would do it quite the way that you're proposing because I think it, it muddies the water a bit when you start speaking of setting the petition aside and maybe, maybe you'll reconsider it later. I think the reality is you have a petition that's been submitted to you, and the question is whether that petition is complete such that it places the board of selectmen in the position to advance it, pursue into the statutory process, advance it to the planning board. And so I think it's a simple vote, either that it is complete and you advance it, or that it's incomplete. And if it's incomplete and you don't advance it, well, then the applicant knows what its options are. The applicant can supplement that petition. The applicant can resubmit a petition with all documents in one package for, for, for sake of clarity for the board and can begin the process in advance of a future town meeting. It could been, begin the process tomorrow in, in plenty of time for, let's say, the, the, the fall special town meeting. I think that you would be doing that if, if, if it's what the board chooses to do based on a determination of incompleteness. I wouldn't want to muddy the waters by talking about setting anything aside. And I also wouldn't want to muddy waters by talking about the erroneous reference to a roadway because once, once the board votes to decide how to handle this particular petition that's before you for roadway acceptance, we then have to have a discussion about the fact that separate and apart from that vote, you do have a citizen's petition that needs to be placed in the warrant. You're obligated to place it on the warrant for roadway acceptance. And yet it refers to a roadway that doesn't exist, and if it, if it's advanced to town meeting, town meeting can't legally take action on it because the proper statutory process won't have been followed if the roadway acceptance petition is deemed to be.
Okay, so let me just clarify. So if we take a vote that this is incomplete and it's not going to be advanced, then we stop here. The, the citizen petition that's included in here is moved for this town meeting.
Well, so, so you, you've got to be a bit cautious, Madam Chair, in terms of using the word move. So the citizen's petition, the citizen's petition is a citizen's petition that was submitted pursuant to statute. And so the question now is, are you obligated as a board to place that citizen's petition on the warrant? And I suppose there's an argument that can be, there's an argument that can be made that because the, because action on the warrant article would be of no legal force or effect because you haven't satisfied the statutory prerequisites, that you can avoid placing it on the warrant altogether. I tend to, as counsel, not just to Townsend, but to other, to two dozen other communities, our advice tends to be be safe and place it on the warrant and then simply notify town meeting that it's a, it'll be of no force and effect. I would say that probably seven times out of 10, the citizen's petitioner, when, when, when put on notice of that information, is going to opt to withdraw the petition. Because it doesn't make any sense to put something forward at town meeting, particularly if the citizen's petitioner wants to come back in the fall. Why do they want to have, you know, a, a matter having already been on an annual town meeting and potentially voted down or discussed? They just want to get their package together and, and, and advance it when it's ready for prime time, so to speak.
All right. So our first is a motion. I got the words right. I- is there a motion to accept the petition to accept private roads, Harbor Trace Road and Cooperate Way? Per chapter 175 to B2?
You, you're saying to accept this application or not accept it?
Well, the, the motion would be to accept, and then you would vote on which way you want to go.
Okay.
Is that correct, Adam?
Right. My motions should always generally be made affirmative.
Can I, can I just, a minute? Veronica, can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, yes. Yes, go ahead.
I think the motion is to acknowledge the receipt of the citizen's petition to pu- to have the town, um, approve those two roads. So the first step is to accept the citizen's petition and put it on the warrant. And I would say I would acknowledge the receipt. Don't say accept, but say acknowledge the receipt of a citizen's petition to put these on a road. It sounds like you kind of have to put a citizen's petition on. And then people can just say, they can vote to recommend not to accept the roads.
Okay, Ross, so.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Adam.
I think we're, I think we're sort of mixing apples and oranges. So I think the first vote, we're going to get to the citizen's petition, but we're not there yet. We're simply addressing the issue of a roadway petition submitted to the town pursuant to the subdivision rules and regulations 175 dash 21, pursuant to state statute, pursuant to the town's policy entitled Owners Responsibilities for Town's Acceptance of Private Roads as Public Way. So all your, my recommendation is that you first act on determining the completeness of that submittal or whether you intend to advance that roadway petition. We can then get to the issue of the citizen's petition, which is much simpler. You're, you're sort of obligated to accept that.
All right. So I am looking for, um, does that make sense, Ross? It's that there are two petitions here. The first one is the roadway petition. Okay. Two is, is we're going to vote on whether, on the completeness of this petition. And then our, our next discussion will be in a few minutes about 175 21B3. So, okay. Go ahead, Chaz.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the petition. Madam Chair, I move to accept the petition. For private roads for Harbor Trace Road and Cooperative Way pursuant to, um, 175 dash 21.
B two.
B two.
Is there is there a second?
Joe Shank, second.
All right, so is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Joe, how do you vote?
No, Joe Shank, no.
Chad Sexton Duranian.
Chad Sexton Duranian, no.
And Veronica Kell, no. And my reason for that is the application is incomplete and in error. So this will not be moving on to the planning board.
In its current.
In its current state. So the next thing to address is the fact that within this package. In 175 21B3, it says. If you've had the hearing, if and the board, the planning board has submitted a report to the selectmen. The selectmen scheduled their own hearing in which they, um. Vote whether or not to accept the roadway. And the parenthetical part in there is that note that it is possible to prepare petitions. With enough signatures to force the item on the warrant. So in other words, a citizen petition could override that vote of the selectmen? Am I understanding that right, Adam?
Yeah, I I will tell you that, um, this this section you're referencing, um, confuses me. Because certainly the town has no authority through bylaw or regulation to override the statutory process. You could do it through charter. Because charter, Special Act Charter functions as special legislation. But remember, although we're referring to this as chapter 175. It's not a chapter of your general code. It's just E code includes the subdivision rules and regulations as if it were part of the code. These are just regulations of the of the planning. So it's not in charter, it's not a bylaw, it's a regulation, and it's a regulation that is simply. Mimicking to some extent, to a great extent, um, in a simplified form. The process for layout and acceptance of ways that is dictated by statute. And this subsection B three talks about what I referred to previously as the third step and fourth step process. That after the the planning board conducts a hearing, that the planning board submits a report to the selectman. And the selectmen then schedule their own meeting, it says hearing, their own hearing. After which they will decide whether or not to put the request on the warrant. And I think the suggestion is that after the selectmen. Conduct that hearing, if the selectmen were to vote to not put it on the warrant. That it's still possible for the petitioner to submit a citizen's petition to get it on the warrant anyway. But we're not even, we're not even reaching subsection B three because we haven't fulfilled B one and we haven't fulfilled B two. So the reality here is, to the extent that the board is going to take further action or a further vote. I don't think that further action or further vote is pursuant to chapter 175, section B one, two, three, or four. It's simply the reality that you have now been 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 served with a citizen's petition. The town has now received the citizen's petition for a warrant art. And to to Ross's point a bit earlier, you're obligated to to place that on the warrant. And then town meeting will do what it'll do. When we get to town meeting, if the citizen's petitioner opts not to withdraw prior to town meeting. If we get to town meeting and the warrant article comes up. And somebody, be it a member of the board or member of the public, looks to me as counsel and says, what is this due? I'm going to indicate that it is of no legal force in effect, that even a even a yay vote, even a unanimous vote in favor of the warrant article. Will not constitute acceptance of the way as public because there are statutory prerequisites. That must occur prior to a roadway being accepted. You can't simply put a warrant article on, get it accepted by the yay vote of the town, and your roadway becomes public. You have to follow the statutory process, and that process wasn't followed.
So Adam, then, having said that, all we need to do is accept the petition at this point.
That's correct.
All right, we don't even have to vote to do that. We can just put it on the warrant. Exactly as it's written here, not as two separate articles, but exactly as it's written in this petition. Is that correct?
You you should place it, our advice always is that citizen's petition should be placed verbatim on the on the town meeting warrant.
Okay, all right, so I guess.
Do we need to vote to accept it or no?
I don't think, it's a citizen petition. I don't think we need to vote to accept it.
It's going to be on there anyways.
Right, it's a citizen petition. So, um. So Ross, do you have any other questions on this?
No, I'm good. It's in the warrant, the draft warrant now. I'll reword it to to be one article, exactly the way they wrote it.
Okay, all right, then I I don't think we need a vote to put it on since it's a citizen petition. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
All right, then thank you very much, Adam. For the explanation and the the help to, um. With this, uh, request.
Sure, happy to help. And and Madam Chair, members of the board, if you'd like me to assist at all in communicating. To the to the petitioner, to the petitioner's counsel, if the petitioner has counsel, which I believe it does. You know, the substance of what occurred and also really sort of advancing what I recommend, which is a request that the. That the petitioner withdraw the citizen's petition because of these. The the shortfalls with respect to process and procedure. You know, I'm I'm happy to do that. I don't know that it's in anybody's best interest, including the petitioners. That the matter be placed on the warrant and be submitted to the voters at town meeting. When the 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 only outcome is that the roadway continues to be private and it'll have to be on a future. Town meeting, annual or or special town meeting warrant.
Okay, I I think that I at least would like you to send that letter to the petitioner and his counsel.
Yes, I'm good with that.
So, um, so I will, do you need me to send you an email on that, Adam, or?
I I don't. I mean, I I would recommend that I begin by just calling counsel and explaining the issue. And then if you want me to document that in the form of a letter or an email, so we have a paper trail, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Yeah, that would be great. I did talk to, um. The the attorney for the petitioner yesterday, and I I did think, like I said before, I thought. He was going to get back to me before the meeting today. So if you would like to give him a call, you have that, correct, in the petition?
I do.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Adam. Thanks, Adam.
Um, all right, so we are at almost 7:40. Sorry, Gary. We were supposed to be on at 7:50. But we were in the midst of that. So, uh, if you would like to come up here.
I'm going to I'm going to sign off at this time. Have a good evening.
Goodbye, Ross. Dry the mountains.
Bye now.
Have the rest of the week. Bye bye. Pull the chair up here, I think, or yeah, over there. You can both come up if you like. But this, okay, so we are moving to 5.1.1. The future management structure of the fire department. So.
Good.
So I think what I'm going to do, Gary, is pass it on to you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Billy Elliott, Deputy Chief.
How you doing?
Billy is in the command structure, second in command. Thank you both or all, and Ross included, for your interest and support thus about seven months. Try to be as quick and concise as I can. I sent you out a, um. A list of some 13 talking points, try to skirt through them as quickly as I can based on the time. And then give you as much opportunity to answer, ask some questions as we can.
Gary, I have an extra copy. Should I give it to Billy?
He's seen it, but you can give it to him.
Would you like it?
Oh, hang on, boss. Thank you.
As a attempt to be completely transparent, I have disseminated this list that you have. To the entire department today, so they are aware of what we're doing and. And and I've tried to maintain that transparency over the past seven months. So. The overview, based on the current status of events in the COVID world, the economic crisis and all of that. I think we're in really good shape, but that doesn't mean that we can put our guard down or that we can rest on our laurels. I think we're poised to continue to move forward in a variety of avenues. But if we decide to back off of the throttle, and I'm sure there'll be questions on the budget and the capital plan. I'll explain what I think the impact will be on that. I'm very comfortable in a level of medical service that we provide. Whether it be on the ground triage or our intercept capacity, which contributes strongly to the ambulance reserve receipt account. That over the first eight months of the year has generated. 499,000, call it a half a million dollars, and projected to, at the current rate, generate an additional 225. I don't know how much detail you'd like, but I can tell you that. Our ability to do on the ground triage in Townsend and the neighboring communities. Is not equaled close by and to maintain that level of service. And not give it up, even though we talked about it before, but for the before, but for the listening public. To provide that level of emergency response, whether it be through ventilation capacity, our ALS services. Some of the Lucas tools that we have, we can save lives without waiting for intercepts from other communities. And we haven't got to the pressure points that all the other services are also feeling. With lack of available medics. I think I heard that there were 600 medics that turned in their, uh, their tickets this year. On the fire side, we've got some older equipment, we'll we'll talk about that. But for the safety and protection of firefighters, they're all trained at a level one, two. Most of them are fire academy trained. Townsend has invested in a PACE pass system as well as a tracker. So that we have a firefighter down, we can track that firefighter in the building for their air packs. We were also trained at the ICS standards, the incident command system, but we still have room for improvement. The next talking point, the needs of the department. I think the needs of the department right now, with all that's going on. We're dealing with the very sick, the dying, and sometimes the dead. The personnel need to understand that we, they have stability within the department, support of the community, and the acknowledgement of their efforts. If you look at the latest piece that was put out today, that Target is advertising to pay. $24 and change for store people to stock their shelves. It's hard to believe that someone would want to come and have bodily fluids sprayed on them at all hours of the day and. And get paid less than that. So that we'll get to when we get to some of the transitions that you've supported. Or that the town has supported in the past seven months. The needs and the chief. The needs and the chief. I've I've heard many folks or some folks talk about part time. I can assure you that a chief is not a part time position. If the town's decision. And and I support this right now for reasons that we'll get to under the budget as well. To only pay for a portion of the time that's involved, I get it. And for those that are committed to the project or to the department, I think they also understand it. But there is no such thing as a part time fire chief. This profession or calling invites strong personalities, which sometimes can lead to, um. Some challenging conversations and directives that may not be well versed to be out on the main street. So the chief has to have the ability in high pressure situations that are either violent or volatile in nature. Which have invited us there to address those without doing it in the public and also with the laws, the epilaws and so forth. The chief has to have that ability. And to find a chief these days, from what I understand from the neighboring communities. And yesterday I was at a district eight meeting, and today there was a conflict on the district six meeting, which those districts. Are overlapping for Townsend. Those are the various communities to the east and to the south and west of us. Most of the chiefs that I've had conversations with are all facing the same problem. So to hire a chief today, it's probably a six month process to get the chief. And then it's a six month process for them to give notice for anybody that's in that administrative position. There are a variety of communities close by that are struggling with that, and some of them had to go back out again. Without naming those communities, it wouldn't take a lot to find them. I think that we need to look internally to who and how we groom and mentor to come along and potentially fill that role. And I think the chief has to understand a strong commitment to the community geographically, personally. As well as understand the town government at all levels to, uh, to develop and groom a succession plan. That has plenty of cross training in it to promote what is needed in the department. And only, not only is it the work that we do when the bell rings, but it's the interaction throughout the community. And bringing someone from outside of town on a very short notice to do that, I think is challenging. I think it can be done, but there's a ramp up time. Number four, the composition of the fire department, the labor force, number, uh. Letter A, the full time per diem and paid call. We have six full time paramedic firefighters. At a level one, two, which is the entry level in fire service. We train monthly at a variety of levels. We're probably 25 paid call firefighters, 15 regular responders of that. I think it's the best bargain in town, less than $20 an hour to haul those folks out of bed and have them come and, uh. Assist at a building fire or or critical medical. The per diems that we have are another great deal, probably 30% of what we were pre-COVID. Most of the communities that these folks work in full time, a lot of the communities do not want. Their staff working outside of their community, being exposed to hazards and bringing them back to the job. So that's contributed to a significant shrinkage, as well as what they've been witnessing, which has contributed. With the lack of pay to the amount of folks that have left being paramedics. And I was talking with, uh, another administrator not too long ago that, in in the educational portion of that. To educate, train, and get enough experience into the folks to have will be full fledged paramedics. They're not sure they have the capacity in the state. The future overview, I'd like to add one full time employee slash firefighter medic. Because if we look at the current contract that we agreed to, the overtime budget is higher than I'm comfortable with. And, um, once again, the amount of medics that we've been able to pull from in the past. To work these per diem schedules is not really available. So in order to maintain the level of service. That the town has come to expect, and we would like to be able to buy. The the overtime budget is higher than I'd like it to be and, uh. And select person Kell had commented to me that the number was higher than she liked, and I agreed, but lower than what we had proposed. Which will also address that under the budget. I've applied, or we've applied, there's no eye on our team to the safer grant. Hopefully by the fall. We would get to understand if we'll have the option of a million dollars over three years to augment our labor force. And at that point in time, I think when we get into the structure of the department, the flow chart. You'll be able to see how that will be done. And it's like any business event that I participated in. That the priming or to get it up to speed sometimes takes a little bit more force and directive. And then when you get it up there, it can level out and sometimes retrieve a little bit. If we can get to that seventh person or even the sixth person in place, one thing that. I'll take responsibility if it goes wrong, and if it does goes well, then we can all enjoy the satisfaction of that. But we've done some reassignment of duties and and that's in the flow chart as well. But when we get the six full time people, and if the seventh one comes along, we're going to realign the the medical side. We'll have a medical director and an EM. We'll have a medical director and an EMS coordinator, rather than just the EMS coordinator. The, the reporting that's going on right now is increased significantly. The other piece that we'll assign duties is mechanical. We lost our truck mechanics, and you've seen the letters from them. But we've also got preventative maintenance and supply issues. We got basic truck checks that need to be done. Someone's going to be assigned to that to make sure that all the equipment is maintained and the certifications are also. And then the fourth assignment will be buildings and grounds. We recognize that we have a new building and grounds group, but during the days, if we have time, with two very good stations, and the third station, fifteen years old, it's, it's important for us to stay up on it. Number five is the budget, very, very high level. We originally, or when I came in, the budget was approximately one million, two hundred and seventy thousand. We proposed to, to finance and select board initially had a fallback during the first pass of one point four, ten, one million, four hundred and ten thousand, of which it really didn't satisfy the requirements and the unfunded mandates. So, we looked at those, we came up with numbers, and then tried to adjust these numbers based on our needs to prepare and maintain this level of service, plus include the pressure that's been on us on the increase in supplies, which has been three hundred percent up until the end of January. Since then, the, the government has acknowledged that we should be looking at a seven percent, sometimes a seven percent monthly increase in inflation. So, with that and the increase in waiting times for our product and the decrease in labor and the decrease in available product, I think three hundred percent is, is understood. However, we haven't asked for a three hundred percent increase in that line item. Our ambulance reserve receipt account, once again, as of middle of last month, was four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, based on the projections of where we've been and what we've been doing for calls, a hundred and forty-nine calls up over last year. In the calendar year, I'm projecting a two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase that will put the ambulance reserve receipt account somewhere between seven twenty-five and seven fifty by seven one point two. The capital plan, after meeting with you all and the focus on capital planning, we've graciously accepted what we've negotiated to replace one engine that needed to be replaced in two thousand and fifteen, that's up to the year nineteen ninety-five. ISO and other agencies suggest, require that after twenty years, we should replace this equipment. So, we have two engines, Engine Two and Engine Three. Engine Two is nineteen ninety-five, Engine Two thousand and two, both slated for replacement, as well as a forestry unit, which the rear end fell out of in two thousand and twenty. It's a sixty, nineteen-sixty version of a deuce and a half, and it's out of service. So, it's not able to be run. We could probably repair it, the cost of repairing and the ability to use that truck effectively has expired. Car Two is an old medic truck that we've used for years. We took it out of service as a medic truck, used it as a car for around town for inspections and a variety of other things, has worn out its life as well. And we are happy that the town has supported us in replacing Car Two with a pickup truck that we think will be able to satisfy more than that needs. We have currently established a truck committee that will break down seventeen folks with varying skill sets. They're going to review an engine, one group. The second group will review the forestry, and the third group will re-review Car Two with a pickup. They'll make the recommendations, understand our budgets, understand what the requirements that we're trying to meet, and then hopefully by the end of April, come back with recommendations to myself that I will forward to capital planning and the town before town meeting. So, we're grateful for that, and we thank you for listening to the pitch that's got us to this point. The communication center will change from the show for July first of two thousand and twenty-two. We'll be changing to Patriot, which is housed in Pepperell. It'll be Townsend, Ashby, and Pepperell, which is good for the regional of the school as well, as well as how closely we interact. Six-one-twenty-two. All nine-one-one non-emergency call, all, all non-emergency calls, and nine-one-one non-emergency calls will go through Patriot and be transferred through as a soft opening to us. Transfer of vital information will last longer than two thousand and twenty-two. What we're also working on during this time is call signs to make sure that we can communicate effectively between Townsend, Pepperell, and Ashby. For example, officers in Pepperell are always officers in Townsend, a C's, and they change as, and Ashby as well, so A. So, we're trying to work out, as simple as it may sound, there's a lot more to changing call signs to than just assigning different letters. And then, automatic responses, run cards, and shared resources are things that we're communicating upon. And that's an expensive shift, which money has already been set aside in the twenty-two budget. And we've assigned one of our captains, C-three, Michael Grimley, to have some boots on the ground, work on the introduction and the daily operations to coordinate, to make sure that when Townsend transfers, not only for fire but for police, because Mike has a great history in understanding the comm center, the automatic responses on our fire boxes and so forth, that we've got a seat at the table. So, these things have been ongoing. Under communications, next would be training. I've introduced, or we've introduced, a training officer from another community that has great interest in Townsend, has a history in Townsend. That's going to bring a different lens to how we're going to train. But we train right now, first Tuesday of every month, there's a department association meeting where everybody's brought up to speed. We also have regular communication through email and text messages. We also use a format or a platform called I Am Responding. So, when calls come in, like Bill Elliott just had, come off on his hip, sometimes it will, all times, it will go to a smartphone. It'll identify the nature of the call, the location of the call. You can touch your smartphone that says you are responding. It goes to a computer monitor in each station sometimes, in each rig or on people's smartphones to know who is coming to which piece and from where, so we can stage and understand our resources. The second Tuesday of each month is department training. There's a variety of things that go on in department training, and we have schedules to meet over the course of the year, and sometimes biannually. The third Wednesday of the month is either company training or medical training, depends on which group is you're in. So, tonight, for instance, Station Three is doing their own company training, but it can also be medical training for across the department. The fourth Tuesday is officer training, and we use these every Tuesday as the, as a schedule annually and biannually to make sure that we stay in check on all of our certifications and all that is maintained in the event of any problem, and, and we are exposed to problems on a daily basis, that it's well documented. The COVID world has changed our requirements on how we train and how we interact, and we've been able to maintain and manage that. And we train not so that we may get it right, but we really train more and more so that we can't get it wrong. Number nine, the maintenance certification of staff, equipment, and personnel. Our buildings are looked at, and they're all in great shape with exception to some metal that needs to be replaced on Station Three. The maintenance person that I talked about earlier will be responsible to make sure that our ladder and our pumps on our, on our attack engines are annually in check, as well as trucks are checked and maintained weekly. A small equipment, we've got a few problems. We've got three smaller pumps that are out of service, but we'll work on that internally. Our saws and small equipment, jaws, extracting equipment, cutters, so on and so forth, they need to be managed, maintained, and certified. Our personnel, the same thing. Each person who responds on an engine or an ambulance has to make sure that they have first responder certification. CPR is in check, the EMTs and the medics are also certified, and their continuing education is up to date. There has been some relaxation on the expectations during the COVID time. However, a lot of it has been exacerbated as a result of COVID. Outside resources, as we drift down through this, we talked about Ashby and Pepperell. We rely on them, probably as much as they rely on us. We're talking, or we've begun the conversation very preliminarily, but I think we'll build on our mutual aid program because we have a lack of personnel that has dropped by, and the other towns have as well. We'll talk about automatic responses, meaning that if we have a building fire in any of these three towns, how the closest engine or resource from the other town may come immediately versus waiting ten to fifteen minutes to have boots on the ground for an assessment of the size of the damage. So, we go by call early, call often, and it's better that than having people stuck in buildings or utilizing RIT, Rapid Intervention Training, to, to get extract folks. So, that's something that we're trying to bring into consideration now more as the challenge of, of health, and we'll do some combined training. Outside of that immediacy, we still rely, and Unenberg does as well, on us, Grotten, Brookline, and Mason for the next tier. And the other tier of that would be Fritzburg, Lemmester, and Shirley. That's part of all the District Six and District Eight that I spoke about earlier. One thing that is necessary, we had to use it on Sunday, was CISM, Critical Incident Stress Management, when we have a very difficult situation that we can't speak about outside of the department. Sometimes those problems wear on people, and the best thing to do is to defuse those or debrief those as quickly as we can. And we had a very ugly call on Sunday, and we've had a few of them in the past seven months. I've seen plenty over the years, but in the past couple of years, the significance of very traumatic exposure to our personnel has been high enough that we, we do rely on these folks. And when it gets bad enough, we do have to send them away to the onsite academy, sometimes for a week or two, to be deprogrammed, debriefed, and to be reassured. One of the biggest problems, if it's not addressed, is suicide. So, they rely on, these folks can go to suicide, drugs, or, or a variety of other things that destroy their family life. And I think that really is key to making sure that we have a healthy department to make sure these folks know that they're supported, both from the top of the department and the community. DCR, Department of Conference and Recreation. We partner with them as much as we can. There's a lot of state land in Townsend. They house some of their equipment in town as well as close by. The Massachusetts State Fire Marshal, or the DFS, Department of Fire Service, I have been in very good contact with them. And currently, on the fifth of April, the Fire Marshal, which I'm not sure has ever come to town, is coming to Townsend, and I'll be meeting with him in the afternoon. And then for our department meeting that night, he's going to address the department. We'll probably open it up as well to the Patriot group of Pepperell and Ashby, so they can come down, and we understand the bases and the resources available to our community. And the, the next part of that is the Massachusetts State Police FIU Fire Investigation Unit. Because of such a litigious society, we want to make sure that anything from a trash can fire to a building fire, death, any of that that may happen, is properly documented. We rely on them, and they have two will be joining us on April the fifth this year. Seven-month in review, where have we come from since September? We've settled an open contract with the union that was open from June of two thousand and twenty. We've increased that per diem, three dollars per hour. It seems like a lot, but for what they do, the twenty-six dollars is still cheaper than a lot of the other communities. It's going up regularly, but we've got some good folks, and they're dedicated and committed. We don't have to pay them the benefits of health insurance or vacation time, and we try to utilize them as much as we can. We, we take, we've taken care of some of the deferred maintenance on equipment. The generator at the hub station, if the power to go out has been out of service for a year, it's up, it's moving, and it can, it can utilize, be utilized to make sure that that station can, can respond if needed. We've got some outstanding items, which we believe are in compliance right now, and we're going to try to maintain that level of compliance. The capital plan, I believe, shows a commitment from the town to our staff, which is really great. And I think moving forward, we'll continue to do a number of these things and keep that process moving if the town agrees with this pitch so far. I've given you a, a copy of a flow chart that was not with that. If you'd like to look at that, or you have any questions, I am more than happy to try to answer them. So, is that just over here? That's all I have? That's on my whiteboard. And everybody in the department, I try to be as transparent as I can. I leave it on the whiteboard, they can go in, they can look at it, they can see where we started, where we are, where we started is not on there, where we are since September, and the objective of where we're trying to go, which is the bottom. I think the top one says transition in red, you can't tell the color. And the bottom was, there's objective A, and that's ultimately where I think we need to go, so that we're not overwhelming and burning people out.
So, so looking at objective A.
Yes.
Tell me again, how many full-time firefighters do you have?
Six.
And the others are per diem?
No, a lot of them are paid calls. So, everybody on the right side of that, so if you look, it says chief. It says C, and then it says assistant chief, it says C-one. That's my call sign right now, by the way. So, it goes from chief to assistant chief to share that responsibility. And then it transitions to your left, where it says C-three, that's Captain Grimley. Captain Grimley, right now, is responsible for fire prevention, warrants, public interaction, the comm center, and permits. He will continue into that position or that role as well. Prior to September, he and Captain Scott, C-four, would be responsible for daily operations. And I eliminated that need of that shared responsibility. I think with accountability, if you go hard to the right, where I use the RACI program to, to make sure we administer folks in the right direction of the flow of information, it made more sense with the span of control to have one person in charge of daily operations. Captain Scott, a paramedic, spent a lot of time in the station, truly committed to Townsend, does a great job. I thought it was appropriate to put him into that role. So, he is in charge of daily operations, filling schedules, backloading when people bang out. And I moved Mike over to, to the other roles. Now, this was not a democratic decision. This was a, an administrative decision, and I think we've, I think we've accepted well. So, on the left side is the full-time guys, C-three, C-four, and then the four names down below, except one says open, that will be filled by the person that we interviewed, and I've got the information here. You have accepted it, but somewhere, there was a glitch in the paperwork that said he was per diem when he's paid call. He's be, he's replacing someone who had left.
And we'll speak to this. C-four is to the left.
C-four is to the left. Chief, assistant chief, and then off to the left, it says C-four, captain. And it says ambulance director. It doesn't really like that term, so it probably won't be ambulance director, but he's clearly, he's got responsibility over the entire department, but his main directive right now is on the medical side, and he will need help with an EMS coordinator to help track and monitor some of that paperwork. I put lieutenant with a question mark in.
Where's the seventh going?
Excuse me?
Where does the seventh person go?
The seventh person would be, I'm not sure if I clearly outlined that. The seventh person would be the future overview, so I'd add one full-time employee. The amount of overtime that the folks are getting to backfill some of those slots, plus the bigger challenge to me is if we take six of these guys and we add a month apiece of vacation time, plus the sick time, plus the personal time, and whatever, that is usually filled up with an overtime shift. So, I think that we could put a seventh person in, cut down on the overtime, and cut down on some of the other added expenses, because we can't fill them with per diems. We got seven full-time people that we can rely on, and the seventh person floats a little bit. Under the current schedule, the way it's set up with twenty-four on or forty-eight off, or so on and so forth, the schedule's outlined. Throwing the seventh person in, that could be a little bit more challenging. In the past, the chief would have been the seventh person, but in my, in my proposed piece, the seventh person But in my proposed piece, the seventh person wouldn't have a regular shift. And they would be available more than just five days a week, forty hours a week. And they wouldn't have the amount of time off or personal time that some of the higher-ups would be entitled to. I think it would save us money.
Well, it would definitely cut overtime.
It should, yeah.
So I see the medical side, but I don't know how that fits in.
As you come down, it says chief, assistant chief, then it goes to C12, Critical Incident Stress. And then it goes to the right, where it says lieutenant fire oper-
Right.
And then those are mostly paid call folks, that's the best bargain in town. And right above that, it says PCDCC2, which is paid call, deputy chief C2, which is Billy. He's more on the fire side. However, under the current program, in my absence, it's Bill's responsibility. With all due respect, and Billy's here, he has a lot of time to get, if I stepped up tomorrow, to step right in. And that's why I'm proposing an assistant chief. And the assistant chief should understand all of that. The guys on the right, excuse me, on the left side, could backfill this. But when you have a fire operation that's going on, you need many people quickly that are trained on the ICS and fire suppression. So it says LT Fire Operations, which could be the same person on the other side. It could move, the coordinator, the EMS coordinator possibly could have two roles. And then it goes down from that, you'll see C5 Harbor. So the harbor station, C5, Brian Mayer, has two lieutenants with him, Lieutenant Kinney and Lieutenant Ben Simmons. And then at that next fork, it says C6, Captain King. He's responsible for the house as much as C5 is, so they're responsible for the building, we call it a house. He's got two lieutenants, Lieutenant Carlson and Lieutenant Mastolinko. And under the span of control, when you do an attack, it has to be well organized and strategized. And then underneath those will be the privates that will backfill. So three to five per crew to an attack, and one captain will answer, have two lieutenants answer them. And the lieutenant, the line officer, will have three to five underneath them. And then it's up to the command officer, which is myself right now, or Lieutenant Elliott. And then it goes down to the, excuse me, Deputy Chief Elliott, and then it goes down to the captain. So it would go chief under for command, deputy chief for command, and captains. The highest ranking officer would command the incident. And far to the right, it says center with a question mark, no position. I don't have a captain assigned in that position, and the only lieutenant I've got is Klein. So I can backfill these slots after I get the seventh person in and understand what our available personnel is.
And those are your paid call folks?
All paid call.
On the right?
Yeah.
Okay, so on the left, this is the medical side. So the fire side is all paid call.
However, the medical side is cross-trained. They are medics, but they also have firefighter one, two, so that they can respond on the fire side. Everybody on the left side has got to have the fire side capability.
Okay. So you have one open full-time firefighter position?
One open firefighter medic position. But we've got the person selected, and there was a discrepancy.
That was the one that we had appointed?
Correct, as a per diem, but he's replacing a paid, a full-time.
So there was a resignation, because I didn't see a resignation come in.
Yes, Drew Bressad resigned, went to air, and he will be backfilled. And that went over, we've been dealing with the town account to make sure all that paperwork is squared away. And he will be replaced by Cameron Alofsky, who's also a paramedic and firefighter.
So everything on the left side, on the medical side, is also on the firefighting side, if need be?
That is true, and the benefit there is in the middle of the night. If we get something that comes in, say St. John's Rectory, those guys are out the door, and they could give us a site assessment immediately, which allows us to ratchet this up under the run guides to first alarm, second alarm, third alarm, general alarm.
Right.
So the full-time people are C3?
C4.
C4. Then PC Open H.
What's that?
PC DCC2.
It should be right down the bar, I was going to say Ron, Jeff, Open, Tommy.
Okay, and so the new position is the lieutenant EMS co-whatever that says?
That's coordinator, no, that is not, that is not the open position, it will be firefighter medic. The future, I would like to have an EMS coordinator work with the ambulance director. These guys don't really like the title, so I've got to think that through a little bit. I don't want to ham them into a corner saying, you can only do this task, you can only do that task, and trying to open these tasks up for-
So that is the new position, as opposed to the open position? The new position is the lieutenant question mark?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is a position that's being redefined?
It's being considered, and it's budget dependent.
Right, okay.
So when I had a brief, very brief conversation with Veronica today, asking her the time, and I said, I don't want to drag you too far in the mud. She said, I like to be in the mud, I like to see a flow chart. I said, I got a flow chart, but it's not to print, I said, it's on the wall of my office. We'll send it to you, so that's how you got it.
I'm glad we did.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I do too.
So let me, okay, so this is the full-time side, the left. This is the call, on-call?
Paid call.
Paid, paid.
Paid call. Paid call is on the right. Then we have chief and assistant chief.
Correct.
So chief is the chief, separate from the full-time guys. Could be full-time, could be not, chief.
Right.
Tell me about the assistant chief.
As we walk down the road, remember what I said to you about a safer grant, a million dollars there over three years?
Yeah.
Remember that I said that?
Awarded in September.
I also, yep, I also believe that with this current proposed budget, I read what Ross had sent back to me. Let me, I'm going to answer that question with a statement. If you go hard to the right, you can't tell that it's in red, there's a line that says budget, and then below it, there's another one that says capital plan, do you see that?
Yeah.
All right, so on the right side, unfortunately, unfortunately, you didn't get a whole lot of time for me to clean this up. So you've got, where Matt and I can back these numbers up. It says budget, five rights is 1.41, that's 1,410,000. Bad. To the left of that, it says 1.5, not perfect. And the next one over says 1.75 NW, no way, town's not going to go there. Now, Veronica's a very smart woman, and she's made a statement to me one day. Gary, I'm glad you didn't ask for the 200 and something you had in the first line, and I knew that that wouldn't work. So under this proposal, I believe that when we can balance out the overtime, and we can take one of these seven positions, six that we've got now, and possibly a seven one, that will eliminate a lot of the overtime, as well as some of the per diem time, that will give us to add to one of those positions to elevate someone to assistant chief on a salary level and put them into a management role, but still expect them to respond on the medical side as well as the fire side. That will be internal.
Okay, so.
Fire away.
Do you want to talk about budget or not talk about budget?
I want to solve every question you've got, if we're here committed, it's fine.
Oh, good.
I don't like the sound of this.
I told you we should put up a chamas on.
Okay, so I will say first, and then you guys can talk. This seems reasonable, reasonable, the flow chart, the-
Got you, got you.
Seems reasonable. I think that's all I'm going to say for the moment, I'll let Chaz, and I want to talk about budget, because I guess, well, maybe I'm talking about budget, and then you guys can jump in. And I sort of told you this, so-
Sort of, that means I should have been more prepared and read between the lines?
The chief position, and for now, we're not assigning hours to that.
It's a salary position, 1,200 dollars a week, 365 days or 724, however you want to look at it. It's the chief's responsibility to either be available or show up to whatever the call is, or assign a replacement in his absence. It is far from a 20-hour-a-week deal.
Okay. 1,200 per week, times 52, gives me 62,400, is that correct?
I'd be right.
And that's exactly the number that's here. Okay, now I understand how you brought that number. So if we're hiring lieutenant question mark, I guess I expected the difference between, well, I guess it would be double, 62,40. I mean, it's-
More than double.
Yeah, it is, but that's because you had interim payments, I mean, well, I guess I expected that decrease in salary for the chief, put it that way, was covered the pay for number seven, Lieutenant Question Mark. But it does not, is that correct or incorrect?
It may, yes, I think that's a correct statement.
Okay.
Under this current budget that I'm asking for, will satisfy everything on the left flow chart.
Okay, so my question is then, on line 317 in the budget?
And I didn't bring that budget, let me show you, I think I've got it memorized, so you can tell me what the line is, and I might be able to-
It's wages, firefighter, paramedics, union. We are, there is a $94,133 increase. So my question is, why?
This is a difficult line to walk, and I understand it with seven years on finance. I understand it from business, I understand it from a little bit of administration. But when the contract was renegotiated this year, that amount is the requirement for those six people under the union contract to receive their pay, their vacation pay, their help, and all that goes with that. So that $90,000 is the increase that is agreed to.
And it includes number seven, Lieutenant Question Mark?
No, Lieutenant Question Mark seven, seven question mark, even though it's in the budget, I'm not trying to confuse you. If you look, there's another line item that has been unexpended. That has, you have a different number, and I'm sorry I didn't bring that up, Veronica, I didn't realize we were going into this. But the town has two budget, I mean, the town has two number assignments. One that you use in town meeting, and one that you use with the town treasurer. And I don't have that, but there's a $76,000 number for a lieutenant that has not been fulfilled, that is in the town's treasurer's line item. And not having that in front of me, it is a very reasonable expectation. That number that you're looking at, 350-something north of $600,000, what is that number? That's base pay, so 25,76,000. Okay, no, it's above that, I had the number wrong, there's blank memory, it is line 315, but it is included.
The 85,800. 315 should be, and it should say open next to it?
Okay, this might not be the place to discuss this, we'll be here all night, if we do this.
I think we need to kind of move on, a little bit, get to some of the- I think if I'm reading between the lines, Veronica, I think you were hoping for a greater savings by a pat-time chief. And I wish that maybe-
No, 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 that's not correct.
I don't want to say-
I was waiting with a decrease in hours on the chief. I was expecting it to be kind of more, we're paying the money, but we would be paying it with the lieutenant question mark, and there wouldn't be I guess this 94,000 difference, I expected to see more like 20.
So here's what I did.
Because to me mathematically, that's what makes sense.
So, hold on just a second. So we could have, I could flow chart, and what I did is I wiped the slate clean, and then said, what do we need to do to build this up to the, let the level of service drive us? The level of service that we need to provide, whether it be medical or fire suppression. Side blast, philosophical interlude here for a minute. We look at a fire engine, how many building fires do we have over the life of that building, over the life of that truck? If in fact, we were to look at it by building fires, it would make no sense at all to buy a truck that every time it goes to a building fire, we take $50,000. But that's effectively where it is. However, the flip side of that, the ISO cost to the town for not having adequate fire protection is greater than that to the, so there's a give and take. So what I've done is I've wiped that slate clean, and I've said, driven by what we need to do to match and meet those requirements, driven by what we need to match and meet the fire EMS medical side at the level that we have, which at the risk of being conceded directly to anyone that abuts us, what do we need to do to support that? And that's the, that I've given you. So because I didn't bring it, it's my bad, I didn't realize we were going to that level of detail. So I've wiped all that stuff clean, and I can tell you that our labor budget is now going to be about one, total labor. Per diem paid call, full-time is about 1.2. If you look at that, if it gives you a labor budget, does it say 1.2?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so how this has been done, every manager could look at something different. I've learned that over my 30 years and my economic background. If the three of us look at an operational flow of a business or an enterprise, we may assign it differently, but at the end of the day, we're going to, hopefully, are all going to get to the same place. So I've cleaned that slate and plugged these people and numbers in in a place that shows us how we're going to get there. So the savings from the chief, we could create a flow chart, or a balance sheet, or a load sheet, spreadsheet, that shows that the reduction went exactly from the $50,000, $60,000 savings of the chief, and we put it directly against the cost of the union, I show it. But then the number to provide the level of service is going to be altered somewhere else. I think that's slicing hair, and I appreciate that you want to understand how and why we can't. So I can create that, and I can move that number over that shows that reduction to be less. But overall, the increase will be non-proportional in somewhere else in order to provide that level of service that we spoke of. Does that make sense? No.
Not exactly, yes, yes, it makes sense, but-
That budget there, we should be able to, in 12 months, understand that there could be some variation. We should be able to look at that and say that it adequately supports everything on that flow chart from transitional to A.
Okay. Questions, thank you. Questions. Questions.
No, right, no.
Joe?
No, uh. I, I guess. The um. The financial side of it, I think is something we definitely need to look at. But I hope in that we kind of try this evening to decide forward, first of all, with how are we going to deal with? The acting fire chief. Put it out, stay part-time, go full-time. I think so much evolved here. I think we got to first get to a, a level of know exactly what we're doing, with who we're doing it. Before we get deeply involved. The, the market house.
Can I comment, Joe?
Yes.
So the helicopter pilot in me, Joe, I pulled back on my collective, I like the hey, what you say? And I pulled this thing up to a few thousand feet and say, the broader view, you're exactly right. Whoever you choose to run the department may approach this differently and they may, they may do it very differently, and that's fine. But the guy that you've got right now that's been in transition says that if you go out for a fire chief, you're 12 months out at best. And you still have a certain complicated, highly volatile, dangerous group that we have to manage that can't be left unfettered. They're all great folks and they all know what they do, but someone has to be in the front of that ship steering it. And, and so however, whatever you choose to do is fine, maybe your next chief will change that. But right now, I think you got to fish a cut bait and to provide the level of service both on the fire and medical side, which I think the town should be proud of. These are the numbers I think that work. And if the town chooses to cut them back, they can, but it will have to be a joint decision or directive to me. I'm telling you what I think it takes to get to the level of service that's expected.
And, and I, I agree with that. Chief Shepherd, I, I do. I think what we do is. As the Public Safety Liaison, I'll just tell you, I expect the past 14 months here. When I first came on, I honestly say.
Your every other word, Joe, if you can get closer to your speaker, that might be good.
I said, as far as I am concerned, in the 14 months that I've been at. Public Safety Liaison, the first part of this, the fire department was an absolute disaster. The morale was out, out to left field. Nobody had a lot of respect for anybody there. What I've seen since September, since you've been acting chief, I think the morale has come a long way. I think the department is run in a very professional manner. I think there's a lot more respect. Nobody likes change, I get that, everyone balks on change. However. If we move to go to a full-time chief, I think we are just going to go backwards. And everything that Chief Shepherd has done will just be a waste of his time, our time, and all the employees. But I think what we really need to do is concentrate on making some sort of a decision here. What we're going to do with, if we're going to stay part-time, and I really feel the job that they have done over there in the fire department, and God, Mr. Shepherd and all his employees have done under him, is tremendous. And I think we're saving money on the pay. I think we're getting more for the buck with Mr. Shepherd than we ever did with the other person. However, with that said, I think we need to try to say, okay, let's put this out, let's get it done and just get this put to rest so we know what we're doing for the next year, two years, whatever.
So Joe, you made a couple of points, I'd like to respond, I'm not looking for this to be a career. I was actually not thinking that I would be in this position. However, if you give me a task to do, I hope my, my history says that I'll do the task. So that said, if you choose, if you choose to go in a different direction, you got to find someone now that can drive it. And I don't consider this job part-time, I wake up in the middle of the night, it's uh, I actually think my availability and my responsibility is anything but part-time. So maybe it's a part-time pay, but it's certainly not part-time commitment.
And, and I, I will agree with you, you are there all the time, all.
Every other word, Joe, get closer to your speaker, your every other word.
Mother's talking.
That's right.
We're getting more out of you than out of a full chief and several in here.
I, I. I think that what we should do is vote whether or not to accept the structure on this. Um, I think that the chief is the chief and the salary that we can offer is what is here. And that we should post for the chief and interview. And, but this is a salary, meanwhile, it's going to take a year to um. To bump that salary, which I look at this and think, oh, how's that going to work?
Um, it's complicated.
Uh, and so hand me your tablet there. That, the, the one that's blank, the big, the paper tablet, thank you. I, I want you to. I want you to consider the following, and I have.
I think you should post it.
Um.
I don't think we should post full-time chief.
I, I think that what we should vote on today is to um. To uh. Whether or not to accept the structure. Um, that, that's put forward, because I thought that was what we were supposed to do. Maybe not. Discuss slash vote future management structure of the fire department. I think we should, okay, so we have a chief at 62,400. I, I don't know. I, I think I. We might want to consider whether we post that or not, but we're not posting for a. Well, we'll, we'll consider that, I think that it's the structure that we need to, to decide on.
In order, in order for this plan to work and not the 175 that I got the NW the next to. You've either got to promote from the five that you've got currently potentially six and put that person in at a greater salary, or you got to stay at this method until the folks that are driving the daily operations have a greater understanding of this table and this building and the community, or you got to begin a wire search that could take 12 months.
Now, we're going to have to have that search anyway, and we don't want to have that search next June. Because if we have that search next June, if what you're saying is correct, it will be not until the following June until we have someone in.
Unless we move from within and then I step out, payroll stays the same, the assistant chief could move in.
Can you do that? Is that legal?
Whether it's legal or it's not, I guess it's, I, I, I can't determine that.
Thing I have to think about more.
When you post that.
I, I, that Townsend, I think that Townsend first policy that we just enacted is right.
It is, but it doesn't mean we don't post the position.
Well, I'm sure.
There could be three or four people that are within and, and would like to have that position.
Perfect, then you wouldn't have to worry about a 12-month lead time.
Okay.
I, I. You asked me before if I had any questions, Madam Chair.
Yes.
But now I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead. Go right ahead. Commenting away.
I, I know you have. I'm letting you. I believe that what has been presented tonight actually is the first time that I felt comfortable with, with what came forward from, from the fire department. Um, I, I believe we should vote on the structure, the structure is exactly what we um had asked and talked about in previous times in regards to what we're looking at. As far as budget, um, we can work out the budget and the numbers and that kind of stuff. I think it absolutely makes sense that um, we should open up that position of chief on a relatively short timeframe, but for right now to support that and to support the fire department. Um, I personally feel that, you know, with uh, the way the fire department has been going right now and with Mr. Shepherd's work, with everybody's work at the fire department. Um, I personally am fully in support of the um, the uh, the structure that was being laid in, in front of us tonight.
So, so can we agree to vote on the structure? Figure out what we're doing about that chief.
Yeah.
At, at the budgeted amount.
From, from what I understand, um, Mr. Shepherd is that um. If we vote on the structure and agree with the structure, um. The monies that we're talking about will be, can be discussed during our budget process, the rest of our budget process, correct?
Uh, yeah, it's certainly not, I didn't, certainly not for me to tell you what I think you should do, thank you, Veronica. But I think uh. I'll have to look at the ARPA funds for those, I will tell you, I'll get back to um, Chaz. I, I, I don't care where the funds come from if, um, and I'll look at 328 on down, 343, 353.
Yeah, those are the numbers that I'm targeting, the fire department didn't put in for any of the ARPA funding.
That was a year ago.
No, it wasn't, it was, well, never mind, okay. It was December 6th when we made our final, but actually early January, we put that out in September. Um, but, which probably feels like a year ago, but in any event, um. Those are the items that I will get and I am just trying to get the budget down to where it's manageable. Where if we do have to go forward for an override, we don't have to make it a huge override, although there might be advantages um, to that, because that gives us more operating capital. For next year, for next year. But if we can get it. I just think that maybe there are some things that could be.
So if the funds can come in to satisfy our supplies, I don't know what these five.
I, I don't think so. You look at them.
But I think in order to make.
Medical supplies, it's mostly replace equipment.
Why?
Uh, you know, new equipment, that kind of stuff.
I don't care how the money gets to that point, I don't care if you pay for it or if.
And that's my, and that's my point, I think that we should vote on the.
On the structure.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
But I will tell you.
Yeah, excuse me, structure is we're voting on as a part-time chief at this time, right?
I wouldn't call it a part-time chief, Joe, there's nothing part-time about it, you got the requirements.
We, we would be voting.
On the structure.
We would be voting on the structure with the chief at 62,400.
That's what I was making, yes.
Which is for the fiscal year coming up. And then if a miracle occurs and more money drops from the skies, which has been happening lately.
Wow.
Um. Our.
My name.
If something would happen. In, in any event.
Safely.
We. Well, that's an option, yes.
So.
Yeah, so, so we would hold the budget at the 62,400. And that's the chief, period. That's the chief, not talking hours at all. The position.
And then we'll discuss, and then we can discuss the 1.5 during the.
Budgetary process, whatever.
The 1.5 what?
A total aggregate.
Oh, well.
So we post, we post that position, the chief's position at salary of 62,000.
Yeah, and we have to think about that, what, what posting means, but um, in any event, I don't want to go into that right now. I, I think the personnel 1.2 is okay, except for line 328, which I think is my top number on that list.
What is that line called?
That line is called certification and training. Um, it's a $9,700 increase. And so I'm wondering if ARPA can cover that. If we need to make cuts, that's the only cut that I would make. I'll, I'll trust you guys in the personnel thing that you need this to go forward. And if it's truer. If it's true, as far as here, here's the amount, this is what we're expending on a monthly basis, then I, I'm cool, but I don't know that now.
How about I come back to you and look at this with a different set of lenses? And I was probably on, I was underwater last fall. Uh, my, my training for the position was a phone call.
Yeah.
So that said. What's that?
Never mind, go ahead.
So that said, why don't I look at these lines, all of them, not just these five, and say, these are the things that I think have been impacted as a result of COVID and what percentage of it? And if you can.
Yeah, yeah.
I will do that, but not on just five, I might do it on its entirety.
That would be fine, but most, these are the ones that are um, to me uh questionable. There are others that I'm not going to question and some that are like building supplies, um, office supplies. Those are normal increases, yeah. It's the, the huge ones, the um, medical supplies, that sort of thing. Is that increase because of COVID? Um, and, and it could be, and hopefully we're not going to be in the COVID world forever. So would they in later years, I mean, ARPA funds through December of 2026? So if we can pull funds from ARPA and we have to look at it again and, and we, we will then know whether this needs to go into operating budget. Um, because it's, yeah, this is what it is now. Or it's something that decreases over time because COVID decreases over time.
And I, if my crystal ball was that good and we could all enjoy the knowing that we don't know. We don't know what the future will.
But in two or three years, we'll know.
Right.
And we have the ARPA funds through December of 26. So we have time to see if we fund these with ARPA. And, and those line items will either, or they'll the other way.
Those are technical terms.
Sorry, but yeah.
That's a technical term. So the economics, the economics major in me says, all things being equal, we don't know what all things being equal are.
Right.
And we have a scarce unlimited amount of resources to allocate.
But we will have data over time and we have funds in a place that. That will cover things that are pandemic related. So I'm just.
Build a case then to say all $230,000 is ARPA-related and you can add 230 to my budget for the next four years, that'd be awesome.
I like the way he negotiates. That wouldn't get by me.
But I'm going to come back with a broader look.
Okay, um, but anyway, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I, I moved that we accept the um, the structure of the fire department as proposed by Mr. Shepherd.
Joe Shank, second.
Labeled objective A on exhibit one.
You got my unfiltered approach right there.
Um. Uh, all right, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
A 16, Dr. Ian, yes.
And Veronica, yes. All right, so. We do have a bunch of things to talk about, but not today.
You are welcome to come any time. And I'll discuss a few, Ross sent this about identifying open items. GWS has returned, I've identified and commented on that, you want this or would you not?
Badger Chair.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
So we going to. Ross something up to put out or um. Posting for that position and what a deadline is.
I, I think, I think Joe, that we'll talk about that after Ross is back. I think that's something that we'll talk about. Okay, for now, we're holding steady. For now, we're holding steady as we are. This is a structure that begins in July, so we have a little bit of time to discuss. Right, awesome. That's what I think.
That won't happen overnight. I wish I could say that. That it just can't happen overnight.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that.
You can have that. I've got a picture of it. Can I, can I leave you this too, which is the, the physical exam on a new hire? Ross is in here, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, let me check that. Which, which new hires? We have not changed the appointment yet. That's on the April 5th. So, because I had questions about that.
He is ready to go and we are ready to put him in as soon as we get the acceptance that it's full-time employment, replacing the one that left. Not per diem.
Right, okay, so I didn't, that was my question to Ross was, I, it was unclear to me whether this was lieutenant, question mark. Or whether it was a position and then.
Replacement.
How long has that been up?
Over a month.
I don't think I've seen the resignation.
It's somewhere in the abyss.
I'm very good at wanting to get this.
You can have the conversation downstairs because they, we moved the status from full-time to per diem. And that was documented. Into the treasurer's office. Went to Rebecca and then the other fellow down there.
But he has not been.
For the, this one or the other?
This guy has not been. Appointed for, for. He was appointed per diem.
Yeah, but he isn't coming, but the other feller went from full-time resigned. Into air and he'd been appointed, I believe, or accepted under per diem. The conversations that I witnessed and signed off on was that his chat, his status was changed from full-time to per diem.
But we did not accept his resignation as a full-time and we did not appoint him as a per diem.
Then we.
We.
The next day.
Need to get something that's there. Okay, thank you very much. I'll get this.
There has been some emails around which we will have to. And I believe there's been a high signature on the change of pay.
Well, I believe that, but I. Okay.
I'm available. Just ring me. If I don't pick up, I'll buy that some later.
Thank you. Okay, Drew was sorry, resigned. And went to, went to air, resigned full-time.
I'm going to dimension on the back.
Needs appointed. Per diem, because right now he's not appointed per diem. He might be. You know, you might have done the change of status with the treasurer, but he didn't change the appointment with the town. Okay.
The tail was on a crash course in this role? But I thought we had dotted that, but maybe we missed a T here and I.
Okay.
Anything else I can do for you?
No, I think we're very good. Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you for your support.
You're welcome. All right. Is Hartley still in there? And can he give me? Hartley, could I have screen sharing capability?
You got it.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right, we are going to move back to our meeting. We're at 4.9. Discuss the lease for Squad Meta. That's where we are and what I'm going to screen share, which, can you see it by screen share?
But I didn't think you screen shared.
I have not yet, but I will.
I screen shared your computer, Veronica. Do you want me to screen share the Chaz's?
No, sir, not right now.
Just mine. It's just mine. Thank you. All right, what I would like to do is what you have in your packet. And right now. We have, we have a lease with TESA that runs out on March 30th, 30th, three days has to come up between March 31st. And. I think that what I am going to request is a motion to extend that lease to. The Friday of the first week of April. Which is. April 4th to April 1st, and I don't know if that's, well, no, not April 1st, April 8th. I would like to extend the current lease to April 8. Which will give us time to look at this. I'm gonna very quickly walk you through the changes I made to theirs. There's being the lease that was presented to us by TESA. We have a.
April 3rd.
To April 8th. And that will give us time to. Run what I'm going to show you. To, to let TESA review it, to let NHESP review it and to let town council review it. And then we would sign this lease on April 5th. We also need to agree on how we're moving forward with the CR. So I'm gonna show you, let me find the lease that I have. I'm out of order here, sorry. All right, so what I want to do is screen share, so can you guys both see it?
Yes.
All right, so first line. I, I would change that to the fifth day of April. That's our first meeting in April. All right, moving down to the proper, oh, let me just talk about premises. It says that if you look at this. The premises are. On the sketch plan, so it's the last sentence in this paragraph, on the sketch plan, the plan. Attached here to as exhibit A incorporated herein the property, so this shows where the fields are, et cetera. I want to. Keep it as is for now, but once the CR is in place, update exhibit A to match NHESP and the CR. So that would be a future thing, so although we're signing this lease. We would eventually, or we will put words in exhibit A, which is not included with what you have here. But we have to somehow allow for the fact that the CR is going to come into play and that will probably take about a year. To get that under, but we need to get the, get TESA rolling out there, so. All right, the, the next thing I want you to see, the things that are in red on the screen are things that TESA put in and. They're, they're following the term. They have, they want a 10-year term with five-year. Advancements. I, by, by charter, we can only do contracts for three years. So I am recommending that we do it for a term of three years, beginning on April 5th and continuing through March 30th, 2025. And then allowing for two additional three-year terms, tenant may with the landlord's prior written consent, extend the lease for two additional. Three-year terms on the same terms as end conditions set for. I mean, we could do it for, you know, three terms or five terms, but who knows what's going to happen? So I, I guess this gets you nine years. As opposed to the 10 years and then five and five that they had. They, anyway, instead of 15, I mean, we could do, what, four additional three-year terms?
Yeah, no, I think three is.
But this is three, three-year terms, so that's what I am proposing and you guys are welcome to, you know, say otherwise. All right, I think everything else stays the same. This is. There's now the next question I have for you. This is a change from before, this word tournaments. Are we, tournaments were not allowed in the past? The purpose of this property of everything that I remember that Mike presented and what we looked at. Was that it was for the use of pretty much the kids in tech. And the, the TESA league. Tournaments changes things, so think about it. Don't say anything now, just think about it. Because I'm going to come back to that in a little bit. Under use of, okay, so now we're down to use of premises tournaments. That's the questionable, the whole thing. Rather tenant agrees to maintain the restricted area and it's open, natural and undeveloped condition in compliance with NHESP. That was put in by TESA, different from the prior lease. All right, operation of the premises. So. I have changed something here. They say. In what you have in. Writing, notwithstanding, do you see that second sentence that starts notwithstanding before going? Tenant agrees to schedule in advance its expected use of the premises. From once the snow melts until the first snowfall, anticipated to be April 1st through November 30th. I changed that to in advance its expected use of the premises from April 1st. Through November 30th of each year. I guess I just figured that there's no point in saying. From once the snow melts till the first snow falls. Because it seems to me that you wouldn't play if there was snow on the ground. And so this gives it a definite year, so I took that out. That's something I would want to run by council. Of each year of the lease term, such periods here and after referred to as season. So I took out the snowball stuff. Because it says anticipated to be April 1st through November 30th, but what if the, from once the snow melts? Well, what if that's March 1st? I mean, we don't have snow on the ground now. It's March, you know. So anyway, I, I just thought dates would be good, so that's why that's there. All right. Where am I at? Activities. We talked about operation of the premises. That was my change there. Cooperation, I did a whole lot of changes, I'll tell you that.
5.5 used by organized groups.
And for organized events. Now, I, I looked at the old lease and this was in there. It says during the season and subject to providing tenant and the board of selectmen with at least 30 days prior written of the premises. They may be used for organizing, for spares and other community events. And by members of any organized group. This is the way it was before. What wasn't in there before is this, prior to use, organize groups using the premises just on a copy of this lease. Attesting to their understanding of the terms and conditions of this lease. Including but not limited to the restricted area, damage to premises, parking area, toilets, lights, et cetera. Tenant shall not be responsible for use of the premises by other organized groups. And this was put in there by TESA and I think it's a good idea. So use by others. Again, these red comments, let me see if I can get this up here. This was recommended by NHESP to be with Antessa and I'm good with it. I think it's good. I have no problem there. Damage to premises, this stays exactly as it is. Concession stand, I guess the one question I would put is, do we want to specify, specify?
5.6 used by others.
Oh, this was allowed before, tenant shall allow members of the public and unorganized sports groups. So this is like kids kicking around. The ball in the neighborhood to go down and use it during. If it does not interfere with their. Okay. And landlord during the off-season, that means that time outside of April 1st and November 30th. The landlord, that's the town, may use and allow others to use the premises at any time for similar purposes. Such that the activity does not negatively impact the environmentally sensitive conservation area. Landlord may, but shall not be obligated to plow the premises during winter. Tenant shall have no obligation to plow the premises during winter. Tenant may close fields temporarily for preservation or restoration and shall notify the board of selectmen. Closed field should be clearly marked as such. So if you go back up to the tournaments. How, how does this work? Used by others, that's during the season, so I'm going to come back to that. Damage to premises, I was all good with this. The concession stand, the only question, I, I put a question there, litter. Should we specify that litter should be picked up? Or is that given? You know, is that something that? You do because that's what you do.
Say that again?
Litter, should we? Tenant may operate the concession stand anytime during the season to provide refreshments to players and spectators. Oh, geez, I guess it's time to go home. This will be like a camp, I'll make the flashlight. Do we want to specify something about premises should be. Free from litter?
Put in there.
Said I can, Joe?
All the trash should be removed.
All trash should be.
Ited by the concession should be removed by the.
All trash generated. By the concession. By concessions.
It's the responsibility of the C here.
It's the responsibility of the tenant. And that comes more from looking at Adam's stand and the trash that gets left there. All trash generated by concessions is the responsibility of the tenant. The, maybe I should say the. Trash generated by concessions. Would that be better? More direct? More of a. All trash generated by concessions. All right. All right, parking area. I put in and, and that event, if the parking areas are not sufficient for tenants' use. Tenant may create additional parking provided that obtains landlord's prior written consent and that of NHESP. No parking shall be permitted in the restriction, restricted area. Once we get the CR done, that could actually go away, you know, but maybe not, I don't know. But for now, I thought that was better. Toilets was fine, lights, tenant shall not install or bring onto the premises any lights without the board of selectmen's prior written consent. And the approval of NHESP. Because lights can make a difference to wildlife.
To the protected species.
Right. Signs, tenant may place or costly place signs identifying the premises. As a youth recreation area, let me look at what was there. So I think I changed something here or added something here. There are some. A fact. Uh, sign tenant may place or cause to be placed signs identifying the premises as a youth recreation area area. Oh, it said tenant sponsors. I I put identifying the tenant sponsors because I didn't know what it meant. Signs identifying the premises as a youth recreation area. Sponsors.
Those are um, those are signs like on the baseball field, they put kinds of things.
Right, um, so signs identifying the premises, identifying the tenant sponsors. I'm good with that. I just thought that having tenant sponsors in there just.
Well, they have signs identifying that it's a youth record. And number one, that's one thing. And then they're saying they're adding tenant sponsors, so they want to add.
So I'm going to say signs identifying the tenant and I'm good with that. Signs identifying the tenant sponsors. I just the way it I didn't think the way it was written.
Yeah.
That's um, and shall okay form to the now somehow I messed up and now I no longer have five point thirteen. I just have thirteen.
Well, this is in here.
This is the pages. Sorry, yeah, no, I'm going to have to export it to Word, go to my other system. Uh, okay, so it's a pain. Um, so sign and shall place signs and form players and others of the environmentally sensitive restricted area. So this is all good. Um, if anyone, I don't think I made any changes there. The assignment of subling fertilizers, passive substances, annual report, compliance with laws and regulations. Uh, five nineteen, that's the next area. This is cooperation with educational activities. And this was all put in by, I don't think I added anything. It this was contains more language NHGSP wanted to see added for clarity. So this was put in by TESA. Um, I did employees, other tenants, agents. I changed the or to and agrees that its executive board, coaches, employees and other tenants, agents, not or I don't want just one of them. I want them all to be educated um, about the concerns. The um, sensitive wildlife habitat on the property. So I changed the or to and that was the change I made here. Everything else was done by NHGSP. Now, here is where the big part comes, the improvements. I added here because TESA wants to um, add a field and um, perhaps a building on that property. And so I um, made some edits, not huge ones. Tenant may apply for permits as opposed to tenant may improve and develop the. They may apply for permits because we, the board of selectmen can't say, oh, yeah, you can do that. Um.
Need to follow the process.
They need to follow the process. I was trying to get this in there. Um, so I said tenant may apply for permits to improve and develop the premises at sole cost and the area of the premises specified by the board of selectmen in conjunction with NHGSP period. Not in accordance with any development plan approved by the board of selectmen because we can't really improve. So I changed that sentence and I struck out.
We don't have jurisdiction over any of that.
No, and I will send you this after. The existing structure located, I think that's the only thing I changed from what they did. Everything else, anything, anything that's in this gold color is me. Anything that's in the blue or the red is either Tricia Foster or Gary Olmstead from TESA. When you see gold, that's me.
Okay.
Um, permanent, so I just what they had was tenant may improve and develop the premises as sole cost and expense. With any development plan approved by the board of selectmen, the improvements. Well, they need their permits. So that's why I changed that sentence.
Yeah, because we they have to follow the permitted permitting process.
Yeah. All right, now, when they're working and and I'm assuming they'll get their permits to do the work that they want to do. Um, because it is wildlife habitat. And because um, further along under maintenance of the fields, they walk the field looking for wildlife before they know. So it seemed to me that you should also do it when you're in a work area.
Okay.
So I added this last sentence. Each day work is scheduled between May 1st and November 1st, which is the critical time. The work areas shall be visually scanned on foot for wildlife prior to commencing work. So that's the sentence there. And I think it was an addition. I don't think I took anything out there. Um, what did they? Well, anyway, so there it is. Um, maintenance, uh, and that was inspired by this prior to my own the field. The field shall be visually scanned. That's what inspired that under work area.
Yeah.
Um, so maintenance of restricted areas, I think that they put that in already. Um, value to maintain indemnification, I think everything else is pretty much. Um, yeah, what was decide, I don't think I added anything else after that. That was it. So if you guys are good with that, I'll get this into decent word form. I will um, send it out and I to you all and also to TESA to um, uh, NHGSP and to um, town council.
Okay.
Are we good with that?
I'm good with that.
Are you good with that, Joe? I'm sorry. All right, is there a motion?
Um, I moved to extend the lease with um, Townsend Ashby Youth Soccer Association until April 8, 2022.
Go Shank second.
Um, all those in favor?
Thank you.
That's extender Ian, yes.
And Barack Kukel, yes. Okay, so we'll extend the lease and we'll do this and we'll have we'll um, sign the lease hopefully.
Signing.
Yeah, and I think because we have a shorter shorter term, I think that makes it not have to be procured, but I will.
Check with them.
Check with them, okay. Thank you, that is four point nine, ARPA projects. What do you want?
Your share.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, let me unshare. Um, all right, thank you. Um, moving on to ARPA projects, I met with, um, I don't think we have anything to vote on here. I I met with Jennifer Thompson, she hasn't gotten me the new chart. She added in the 600K that we approved for the bridge that we had voted a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago. Um, she requested that we hold up on accepting new projects, even though I did talk about it with um, Mr. Shepherd tonight, uh, until the reporting period is April. That is our first report to go to the federal government on Martha. It has to be at the end of April. So she said just hold up on accepting or changing anything until beyond that and just let things start rolling and getting in place. That's that. Um, town administrator updates and reports. I think we've, okay. Uh, this goes with five point one point two. After calculating the tax levy ceiling and accounting for the budget cuts discussed today, the fiscal year uh, 23 budget is down to $514,000. That's what we need. Less than reported on three one three one was like 724,000. So we're getting there, but it's still concerning. Um, there was information that came in from North Middlesex. We're hopeful that this will provide some relief to the deficit that um, because the state is more than likely going to fund more of the transportation budget. They they are willing to take more E and D and then replace it when the budget comes in. So we could get um, more favorable numbers from the district. Um, uh, so it might be appropriate for the and the finance committee to vote a formal position of voters regarding their support or non-support of this budget. Um, I don't know if I'm ready to do that yet, I do.
Well, I I know that I don't think it's, no, I'm not ready, no, I don't think, no, I don't think it's ready. But I think it would be something that would be a good discussion when we do our our term meeting that we talked about earlier. Or our discussion about.
I mean, with with the town on the 20th, I think we have decision uh, before the warrant is posted. And um, only because we have to decide whether to put, okay, so um, let me finish reading and then we'll come back. When I return on 3/21, I'll work with the FinCom and department heads for cuts Plan B to make up any remaining deficit. And and that's also why I'm asking Gary about getting things to ARPA. Because if we can get things down to a reasonable amount. Um, so let me read more. And option for consideration is the use of the stabilization account or a prop two and a half overrun. A prop two and a half, as unpopular as it is, will leave the town in a better financial position for fiscal year 24 because if we were to approve a prop two and a half, even if it's for a small amount, it means that that is added to the levy amount.
Right.
And we will have more funds next year. Um, it because it becomes part of um, tax deal. How's that for? Nine twenty words. Okay, so anyway, um, pending the end of March budget status, the board may be asked to include a prop two and a half question on the elections ballot that they will sign at their April fifth meeting. Depending on how far down we get the budget, we may still need a prop two and a half overrun. If we can't get it down to balance uh, with departments making cuts and the school district um, providing more relief to us. Um, there are currently 24 articles in the draft special town meeting and annual town meeting. Due to the financial pressures this year, it may be prudent to remove the articles to add to the taxes funds for stormwater management and community preservation act. So now's the time to get out your warrant articles, but I'm sure you guys all look. Sorry for being so late. All right, so looking at the um, warrant articles very quickly. Uh, I wanted to note a few things. So special town meeting is there. Um, for article three, this is the James H Tucker Fund. Um, I would like to know who the three town West Townsend residents are. That's what I'm saying. Article four, I believe is possible to remove. You're looking at the special town meeting. Now. Okay, so just very quickly, I'm getting to the budget. I'm just taking the long way there. All right, um, well, three needs people. Article four, didn't we say to remove that at the last meeting? Okay, so article four can be removed. Article five, number seven, inspectional services, that is no longer needed. That should be out of there. That was for when the high school was being built and that was not in the budget in FY21. It was put back in in FY22 and I'm sure Ross just picked this up and put it there and figured this was normal. This is not normal, longer name should be removed.
Yep.
Okay, um, article six, um, there are adjustments that need done there um, because ambulance, the numbers are wrong, but Ross can look at that. Um, the functional segments, now we're getting to where we want to go. Um, this is where the budget would go. So on um, the budget spreadsheet would go right in here. This is where we do it.
Yep.
So I'm I'm looking at the functional segments.
Under article six.
Under article six, yes. The the table that's in there. Um, general government is down 6.5% even with our 3% increase for um, all staff. And increased hours, we are down 6.5%. Public safety is at five increase, which is really too high. Um, education is at 5.3, too high. Highway and streets, too high. Solid waste, I don't know if we can, you know, that's a trash pickup. Um, human services is at 2.9 increase, culture and recreation 3.4. Death service is down 16%. Insurance, I can't really read that number, but I think it's at seven something, but I don't know. Um, but it looks like it was crossed out and something was written over top of it. Not on yours?
This is 121.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if what if insurance might be done yet, but really you need things to be in the three up or down everywhere for it to be doable with what we have available to us. So anyway, um, I guess for me, the question is, do we do a prop two and a half override if we can't get it down to where it needs to be? The 540, or do we take money out of stabilization? And for me, this is my own opinion, if the money we have to take out of stabilization is less than 100,000, I'm good with that. Um, because we do have free cash and we could put that back in in the fall. Um, at a special time.
Well, we we do have you in that with with that philosophy. I I also feel that um, you know, there was a comment that that um, was made to me in regards to um, the hiring, these positions were already funded, so we're not technically hiring anybody new. We're hiring what we've already approved last year, so there's no, there's no additional um. There's no additional um, it's not something we can cut because we had it in the budget last year. Um, but I do see that um, where we're at right now, to me, although it it is a bit high, I think we can do a better job getting it down with what we have. Um, I believe also with the fire department today was another thing that I thought of is that there are some funding with the ARPA that is really kind of COVID related that we are able to use that funding for. Um, and that's exactly what these these ARPA funds are for. We if had COVID not happened, we wouldn't have had these these increases in these certain items. A lot of it was their medical equipment, um, PPE, that sort of thing, I think was was kind of exponentially more expensive this, the past two years, actually. Um, that we couldn't really budget for because we didn't know for the following year. Um, having said that, I I I'm following along the same philosophy you have in regards to that.
All right. Joe, do you have thoughts on that or?
No, I I with Chad, I mean, if we can get any ARPA funds, but my comment, I think Mr. Shepherd said one other meeting that, you know, a box of gloves is up 100%, what they were buying. And, you know, it's all related, you know, they're using more gloves, they use more PPEs. I mean, so if we can use some of that, that will help us tremendously on the budget. And we're just stopping away at it.
Okay. Um, so then the capital fund, so I'm moving away. Article seven, um, this is to fund directed officials. This is to fund elected officials. The only elected official in Townsend that gets paid is the town clerk. So this, uh, this article seven is needed to fund an elected official's salary, so to speak. So we, we put in here for the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board. All right, so I, I have article eight and article nine on water. Article 10, this is what capital, uh, capital approved. And I think that the article needs more work as far as an article goes, but this is what we were, what we approved. So we're borrowing for a fire engine, for forestry and a plow and sander for highway. And those will be borrowed and we do have the ability to do that. There's also a bond, 140,000 bond that we can repurpose. Everything else pretty much is either free cash or ARPA. And that's it. The, the question becomes police department, the four police cruisers, do they stay in the operating budget or they, do we pull them out in order to get our budget down to balance for this year? And that's a tough one.
That, but that is something that I know that we talked about in, in, in the meeting. I shouldn't say we, because I wasn't on the Board of Selectmen at that particular time, but I was part of those discussions in regards to the leased vehicles that they had. I mean, there's, there is arguments that those are not.
They're necessary.
They're necessary, but it's not a recurring. So does it? Does it have a place in the budget? Isn't it, some of them have one more year left?
That what you're bringing in the fourth year, maybe the third year of the fourth year.
Right.
Would be next year and then there's another, and then it just keeps going.
Right, right. So there it's, I mean, I think that that opens up for discussion on how we want to budget that.
So anyway, that's something that has to be considered for budgeting purposes. In general, I think it should be in the operating budget, but if we're in a crunch, it might need to be pulled down. Anyway, okay. So that's that article, article 11, I wanted to talk to you about. These are the articles, old warrant articles with balances. I, I would like to see this, the 15K repurposed in the special town meeting for MIS equipment. As opposed to being put back into the capital stabilization account.
Yes.
Okay.
That could be, that could be used for the moving or doing the wiring for moving the equipment out of the selectmen's office down to meeting room one.
Well, we also have ARPA funds allocated as well.
Correct, but we could use that for the wifi.
Okay, so then in that case, so we might want to repurpose that. So that was just a
That's a good idea. Reallocate, you mean?
Reallocate however. Okay, now we get to what Ross was talking about. The stormwater management obligation. We, the town, have, need to fund the stormwater plan. And all the other towns around us have, have had for years an assessment on the tax bill. I think we should keep this because there is never a good year to add something to the tax bill. So this one, I think it's necessary. We are in the fifth year, I think it is, of the town's stormwater plan that we have to file with the state. This is to clean all the storm drains, to do any any work that needs to be done for places where water is gathering, that sort of thing. So. And there is a small assessment that goes on tax bills. Groton has it, Pepperell has it. And it should be, it's townwide. It shouldn't just be on water users or whatever. It's townwide for it. So I just think we should look at that and vote to add the fee. We can figure out what that fee is. Is it half of 1%? Is it a fixed fee? Everybody pays, you know, a hundred dollars a year, 200. What do we need to fund the town's stormwater management obligations? But it isn't free. And that's all I'll say. So I think that article 12 should stay. Ross said that, what, where is it on his thingy?
This may not be a good year for this addition.
Yeah.
A good year.
It's never a good year to do that, ever, ever. And it has to be done. So.
Do you got to talk?
You have to talk closer to your speaker. You sound like, yeah.
I don't think this is the year to put that on. I know no good, no year to put something like that on. But, you know, when people are paying $4.50 a gallon of gas, the taxes, I, I just, I, I think we got to be careful of that. I really do.
Well, we will vote on the whether we include, I, I think we should keep it. Well, we want to vote right now or should we wait?
No, wait until the fifth.
I, I would like a dollar amount there. Like, what is it?
I want to know what it is.
So, all right, 13, we need a dollar amount there. This is for the transfer to can, the annual transfer.
Yep.
14 is good. 15, 16, 17, 18, 18 and 19 are the petition that we talked about earlier.
Why are they, why are they separate articles? Because if they go on article 18, just have a trace and then they go to cooperative pay. They're both on one petition, so why do they have two?
Because Ross split it up. So it must be exactly as written. This is one article and the wording must be as submitted since it's a citizen petition.
I read that citizen position petition and it says on both, they don't have two separate. They say they're going to be named, you know, I, I, I will question that. I don't think.
Oh, you are correct. This is wrong. This is wrong. It needs to be changed.
Yeah, per, 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 what Adam suggested tonight is that we have to have it on the, on the warrant as it's written in the petition. So Ross is going to have to, yeah.
And he said he, Ross heard that and he said he would, so. Article 17 is submitted by the Board of Selectmen to accept the four properties from the land trust.
Yes.
Article 20 is the 35-foot no disturb. We'll get to that. Article 21 is the Community Preservation Act. That was the other one that Ross said take off and I am good with removing that.
Yeah, this, but I want to make sure that it does go on for at least next year because this is part of our five-year plan.
Yes, I would like to have it, but I'm good with.
I'm good with taking off 21, Joe, if you are.
All right, so we all agree on that.
Yep.
We don't need to vote. 22 and 23 are the planning board articles. And 24 is to move money from stabilization to balance the budget if we need it. So we either do a two and a half override and we maybe keep this in. So the two and a half, if a two and a half override is needed, if it doesn't pass at the ballot, then we move from stabilization to balance.
Yep.
So, and that is it for the warrant. Moving on then. With Ross's, we did the fire department stuff. He recommends the board decided it wants to continue with a part chief or move directly to a full-time chief. I think we, we accepted Gary's structure, which makes it a chief at a halftime pay is what it is. All right. Water department will need, okay, so this is, we talked about this with the vehicle, so we covered that. And then notification that Ross is contracted with Jared Aponte to provide consulting services for the treasure collector officer, $75 per hour for a maximum of $900. So that's just informative.
So I, I, since we're talking about, real quick, the treasure collector is that individual able to, is a procurement officer, is she certified for procurement?
She is, according to the materials that were submitted to us.
Okay.
She has NCPCO certification.
Correct.
Which means she's taken the test.
She's taken the test and she's certified, so.
Yeah. I'll confirm with her. All right. So that's that. Discuss the budget, the capital plan and the warrant articles. We've, we've discussed the warrant articles. We've discussed the capital plan. I don't know that right now, does, does anybody have anything more to say about the FY 23 budget?
No.
Okay. All right, and Ross is going to work with the departments. I have, I have suggestions for him. But I always have suggestions for him, whether he takes them or not. It's all good. All right, so that's that. Any reports from board liaisons?
No, I'm good.
Trying to think. I'm looking at this. I don't think I do. Mange to companies. Oh, I will, I will say this. The accounting for the audits, for the, the audit committee, we had sent out in January the packets to all the companies. I'm going to call the companies. As far as I know, we haven't received an R, you know, response to our mailing for audits for next year. So, but the opening of any RFPs to come in is or any responses to the RFP is March 22nd, which is next Tuesday. So I will call the companies. If we don't get any responses, then we have to go to Plan B. So there's that.
Um, I have, most of my meetings are coming up, so I don't have anything since our last, our last meeting. So I don't think I have anything really.
What about you, Joe?
I spoke my public safety with Gary.
Andrea, do you have a liaison report? Your hand is up. Do you have some, you're muted.
Yep, I'm off. No, it, it, I talked to Terry today. And she said you would be putting in for a reserve fund transfer for MIS.
MIS, if you look at the monthly report, we're pretty much right at the, we, I think, expanded.
Yes, and there's more that is coming through.
And so that's what we would need if there's more funds that come in for this year. So the answer would be yes, but I don't know for what amount.
And you don't know when you'll put it in?
I can put it in tomorrow. I was waiting.
Tuesday, so.
Okay, well, there's, uh, there's licensing, like Microsoft changed their, their licensing agreement. So those, those changed and those just, we just updated that last week. So yeah, I can get them all in, Andrea, by the end of the week.
Thank you. Send them to Don Hayes.
Okay. Yep.
All right, moving on to 5.3, announcements and communications. There were a few things in the packet. As the clerk, do you want to read through these or?
Well, I have from March 1st, a letter from Xfinity saying they're committed to keeping you and our customers informed about the changes of TV services. And it's really a couple of plans that they had. On April 26, 2022, they're going to move from expanded basic entertainment, Xfinity TV Starter and Xfinity TV Economy Plus to limited. And then effective May 12th, they will no longer be off, FS1 will no longer be offered as part of a digital economy, but will continue to be available in the sports and news and expanded basic tiers. So as per there, I think it's a state requirement that they do that. There is a legal notice from the zoning board of appeals. The there's a public hearing on Wednesday, March 30th at 5:45 on the application of right, but I was, I was, I'm not going to attempt saying the last name.
No.
It's just that I couldn't pronounce it and I wouldn't want it.
Okay.
But the applicants are proposing to repurpose existing interior structure in a single-family residence under approval for accessory apartment used at 169 Wallace Hill Road. There was a letter that was sent in to the chair. Do you want me to read this in the record?
I think we should.
What's that?
Yeah.
To discuss this.
I, I think we should just read it into the record and then perhaps, well, do you want to read it into the record?
Right.
Why not?
And, and say the name of the individual or?
You sent a letter.
I don't know about sending the name of the individual. Just the rest.
Okay, I recently had an incident where a man exposed himself to my daughter and I, while we were driving by the Y's parking lot. I am working with the police on this investigation, but they are indicating that their hands are tied as there is some level of expectation of privacy on this man's part in trying to urinate in a public lot next to his car while facing a public street and multiple houses. I realize that you don't have the information on this case and I'm not necessarily asking you to get involved in a specific incident. However, this raises a much larger issue in my opinion. Currently is seen as legal that people can expose.
You froze.
An ordinance to make this strictly legal. Illegal. I believe it is time for Townsend to do the same. The place where this incident occurred is approximately 50 yards from my front door and approximately 20 yards from my children's bus stop, directly between the two locations. The incident occurred around 2:30 PM on a Sunday. The possibility of this happening while my and my neighbor's children are walking home from the bus is far too high for my liking. The officer is comparing the situation to urinating in the middle of the woods where nobody is around. I certainly understand that situation, but I feel that there is a very large difference between the two scenarios. I would like to discuss this situation with you or someone from the town who seeks to ensure Townsend remains safe for families. Please let me know when you would be, when would be an appropriate time for this discussion. Thank you for your time and attention.
I, I guess I would want to maybe talk to the, I, I don't know where, maybe we hand this to the police and see if they think it's necessary to come up with a
Well, in regards to the incident, I mean, we, we, I would have no comment because that's something that the police would be working on. If we're looking at a policy procedure or law, I would think that we would, because it does deal with public, public safety, I would say that we might want to talk to the chief and get some direction from the chief on, on what he feels or what direction we should go on this. on uh, what uh, he feels or what direction we should go on this. Um, if we do need to enact some sort of um, um, law or whatever, I think we should get some direction from him. Um, also, I think concurrently, we should uh, maybe uh, ask um, town council as well. It's something that we should be getting involved in or what the procedure is in getting involved in this.
Okay.
That's my thoughts, what do you think, Joe?
Well, I I mean, my opinion, I mean, all the student laws on the book, I mean, going to do something of that, rest ya, I mean, it's a police matter, but the police department can't put and. To descend and let it, let the police, that's nothing we should be involved in.
So, um, what I'll do is I'll talk to the chief and I'll talk to town council.
Yeah, I'm in the interim, um, I I think we should send out a um, uh, an email thanking um, this individual for their um, for their comments and and let them know what our decision was in tonight's meeting.
Okay.
If that's pleases the board, just to let them know that we're working on it.
Okay, I can do that, are you good with that, Joe?
Yes, I'm good with that.
All right.
Um, the next one is, I had received this and I put it in for correspondence. This is, uh, dear municipal leader, we're working, we're writing to encourage you to take the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge and join a national coalition of mayors and heads of local and tribal government recognized across the US for their efforts to sustain the monarch butterfly population for generations to come. The Mayor's Monarch Pledge is currently accepting pledges until March thirty first this year, and I hope you will consider joining. With our nation's monarch butterfly populations dwindling, you have the opportunity to unite our community around conservation efforts for this imperiled pollinator. Since two thousand fifteen, more than a thousand Mayor's Monarch Pledge signatories uh, have engaged eight million people and restored or enhanced more than eight thousand acres of habitat. When you sign the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, you get access to a proven framework extended to support efforts in our community to restore and enhance habitat for monarchs and other wildlife right where people live, work, learn, play and worship. To implement the Mayor's Monarch Pledge in our community, the program involves three main steps. A mayor or head of your local government takes the online pledge between December first and March thirty first each year and selects at least three monarch conservation action items out of thirty that the community will work on. Initiate the specified actions the community selected throughout the year. Track and report your progress by submitting an annual report by December first. Learn more about the pledge and how one can chart our community's path to becoming monarch champions by visiting uh, this particular website. Um, thank you for helping to save monarch butterflies.
Um, I received this as well and I did reply to the um, people who sent it to say, would you be willing to head up a community group to do this?
Okay, that's.
And I got no response, so. Um, I I won't be, I mean, where I'm certainly willing to sign the pledge, I wouldn't do it unless there was a community group that was coming forward that would um, see that the actions required were taken.
Right, I I believe in the cause, I think it's a good cause, but me personally, I don't know about you, Joe, but I I have a lot of things on my plate right now that, my platter, I should say. You know.
If they want to do it, we'll be happy to sign it, but get like Veronica said, get a group together.
Okay, so if anybody is interested in that, let the, um, you can write selectman at Townsend MA dot gov and uh, let us know that you're interested in uh, um, taking the Mayor's Monarch Pledge and and we'll we'll provide the paperwork and help you out with it. Um, I also have received um, a couple of resignations. Um, I have um, Janelle Hart submitted her resignation as a member of the Townsend Dog Park Feasibility Study Committee uh, effective February first, twenty twenty two. And um, Kimberly Clark submitted her resignation from the Police Department's Administrative Assistant on February twenty second, twenty twenty two, effective March ninth, twenty twenty two.
And then I I have one more, but it didn't, it has not yet come in through channels, although it could be in the office there.
Um, and then uh, effective immediately, um, Mr. Gary Shepherd has resigned his position as member of the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust, effective March eleventh, twenty twenty two.
All right, um, our next meeting will be. Yes.
They, in the law, they don't resign to you. You can accept their resignation, but it means nothing, it has to go to the town clerk to be accepted. Even though times are immediate.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And uh, Mr. Shepherd is aware, I sent him, uh, that that came in, what date was it, last week, Friday maybe? Uh, yeah, it came in on Friday, so I asked him to write it up and sign it and give it to the town clerk.
Thank you, and those other people as well.
Um.
That's from the, from the town clerk.
And there may be something from the town clerk in the box, but I did not check it today. So I don't know, but I wanted to get that resignation there because um, we can appoint someone on the fifth.
Oh, certainly, it it just, the way you handled it, it sounded differently, I am glad you did it correctly, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, our next meeting for six PM Tuesday is the fifth of April. However, um, we will be doing interviews prior for the TA search. Uh, probably on April second.
On April second, right?
That is correct. All right, is there a motion to review and sign? Payable warrants.
So moved.
Is there a second? Um, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. All right, um, do we have a motion to go into executive session and adjourn from executive session?
Uh, I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This is in regards to West Con versus Townsend Conservation Commission.
Is there a second?
Joe Shang, second.
Um, all those in favor?
Joe Shang.
Chad Sexton Duranian.
Veronica Kelly, yes, thank you, everybody. Partly, it's okay to end the meeting, we have a separate link that we will use for the executive session. Thank you very much, everybody, have a good evening.